Renifer.
Morning.
About what I am. Sixty Saturday, right? Good range, perfect range. Better than three inches.
Yeah.
No, I experienced that the last night.
Well, and when it rains that much, it's loose anyway. It just runs down the streets and the ditches and goes downstream with rivers and hills.
I guess there's a few people still got weed.
Well, that's, that's the way it works in the morning. If you hold off right now, it's not right.
That's the voting delegate for, voting delegate, Kate, some go.
It's hard enough to get employees to do what we do, but we're going to have to. It is.
Yes, I, I did, and I do have, I have this terrible idea.
I don't offer minutes, but I'm offering fifteen dollars an hour.
You already don't. You already don't. Hey, let's take care of the minutes. Have any corrections?
Nobody wants. They're, they're tiny.
Of course, they're basically subs.
Yes, you did.
My sister's boyfriend, so they're both sending him out there.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's absolutely, it's.
I'm one of the few guys that buys like three thousand dollars of propane in December. They gotta be warm on. They're breeding, they're pretty, very aggressive. They try to fight you.
Do we have any corrections or do we ready to approve minutes?
Should we have added in the nursing home section what the estimated cost is going to be? I mean, that was part of the discussion.
I figured we'd address that. He's coming back with a closer deal as we. I guess we can.
I didn't get that far side of what it was.
Four or something, but I don't remember that.
Yeah, four hundred. I thought I had that his price was about ten percent of the estimated cost.
That's about what it is. Be less than ten percent. We're gonna go downstairs, are we? I guess I don't see the need to put that in there at this present time. It's only a very rough estimate anyway. Extremely rough. I've made your proof, Murks.
Do I have a second? All second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried.
You want to take care of David up here or do you want to go downstairs first?
Uh, David Doe.
Doe. Yeah.
Who?
David Doe.
Yeah. What do you say? You want, you want to do him here or go down, go ahead and go downstairs?
Do we have people waiting in the hall or something?
There have been a few show up. A couple of them, there were a couple of them stepped through the door and I told them they were going downstairs.
We can have them lit on the downstairs.
Okay.
We'll move downstairs.
Me this morning, as she was the one that had given me the top copy of that memorandum or directive for the county back, back when that was initially addressed with the MOU or, or the resolution pertaining to assistance with other counties. That was signed years ago. As you can see, Heller, Gomel, and John Koberman were commissioners at that time. Again, that's what the county currently has in place with Mitchell County. The next one is the copy of the.
I'm sorry, wait, before you go on, this one that you just brought up, two thousand twelve, two dash fourteen. This highlighted section, is that something that you highlighted, section two? Yes.
Again, well, Donna had, had given me this information. And.
It just says who, who can request, who you request it from.
In the event of?
An emergency.
A disaster?
Yeah. I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, I'm just wondering, are you bringing this to our attention to try to, to, to readdress the ambulance issue? Is that what this is?
I'm telling you, you were saying we needed to make policies. I'm bringing the policies that we already have, so you're aware of that.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you.
Okay. Not trying to be argumentative. I'm just trying to tell you what we have. I'm not, we have always been told that they are sufficient. If they're not, we need to move on and do some others.
No, this looks good. It just doesn't touch our insurance, that's all.
And then there's this, the one with the state is the second one. And we were told, we all, we had individual ones with all the counties like this. And then the state, Kansas Emergency, Department of Emergency Management, said the one as a whole state was sufficient because all the counties have signed it. So we don't have to have individual ones. That's what we were told when those were done, so.
Again, right, and, and these look good. The only thing I would point out is the context is in the event of a disaster.
Right.
And then it doesn't really talk about our insurance, so these are great to have. It's just not what I was addressing in the last meeting. What I was addressing was in the event of lending or borrowing equipment, we should have something in place for our insurance coverage, which was exactly what the correspondent said from our insurance agent. So, um, those really don't touch that, but those are great.
And then again, in the bottom three, there's Mitchell, Ellsworth, and Russell Counties. Again, Keith Hopper is the emergency manager from Ellsworth and Russell County. I saw him last week at an incident management team meeting and had showed him these also. And I had been in contact, Rick Horne, the emergency manager from Mitchell County, had called me. And, and through a collaboration, we came up with these MOUs that, that now you're looking at. It addresses in the fifth paragraph down, whereas, or the, the fourth, whereas, equipment may, may require reimbursement, the requesting county representative will do a walk around of the requested piece of equipment with the representative that delivers the requested resource along with the other available staff at the designated check-in area. Any cost for damage done during deployment of the requested resource will be documented by the county. And itemized costs for repairs will be billed to the requesting county at FEMA's recommended rate. And then it goes into talk about also that the, the last paragraph on the second page, excuse me, the, the.
Second class, whereas?
Thank you. Whereas, yes.
Okay. Subrogation of injuries arising and workers' comp, but what about physical coverage?
On, on the equipment.
Yeah, that's the only thing that the insurance agent recommended that we, in this, which is great that you drafted this. I mean, that's amazing. You got covered almost all of it. The only thing, unless I missed it.
And again, whereas, both parties to this MOU agree to maintain such insurance of self-insurance subject to and as applicable under KSA's chapter seventy-five, article sixty-one, and KSA's chapter forty-four, workers' compensation, further, both parties agree to waive surrogation for injuries arising. And I thought that was included in there.
This is, this is for workers' comp, so this would be an indemnification against workers' comp for an actual incident that occurs to the body. And the insurance agent was talking about an incident that might occur to the vehicle. Whoever's covering the vehicle as their primary coverage basically has to take on the, the result of the loss. So he suggested that in something like this, it would say that they carry, I'm not sure what it would be called, but when you call the insurance agent, you carry like a liability on equipment that you're not the primary owner and insurance handler.
Correct.
That's what he was suggesting that be implemented, but all the rest of this is very good.
But again, too, on that, on that subject matter, when, when the region, the region has two, two trailers that, that have been given to Lincoln County. One is a, an, an incident command trailer, that there's, there's radios, there's printers and, and equipment in that trailer. Once a county vehicle hooks onto that trailer, that trailer is automatically covered by.
Vehicle that it's, that's towing.
That, that is towing that vehicle, yes. The carrier is, is automatically in, in charge of, or, or it's automatically assumed under Lincoln County's policy, or whoever, whoever the towor, the mover is of that equipment. And again, I forwarded these to Jennifer and she looked at them also, and, and she hasn't had a chance to thoroughly go through them. She did acknowledge that she had received them, yes, but she was looking through them. And she didn't give me a timeframe on when she would, when she would look at them, but.
They're all identical, correct?
Correct, just, just the commissioners on the last page, or I'm sorry, the second page for each county has been changed along with the clerk's information also.
Well, I would maybe suggest if K-CAM has any specific wording that they want in there, that they would send that to us and that could be included.
That'd be great. If I would have thought to make my phone call last week, I could ask them right then and there with everyone present, but nobody stayed.
I can get that information, I can get that information from Deborah and, and I'll get in touch with our insurance company then and have that.
And I have a couple other questions.
You have a letter from the insurance company.
Oh, I got him on the phone as soon as you guys walked out of the room.
But you already had a letter from the insurance company.
Well, I'm sorry that you didn't want to speak with him, but he answered the phone, which was nice of him to talk to us on the spot.
How, how does the request get made in that draft? I don't have a copy in front of me, David.
Sorry.
Well, you know where it's at, so I don't have to look.
Give me the word, give me the second one.
Second one. Because now, the old one we had with Mitchell County, the request is made to the board of, no, the state. The department head just has to request, call the chairman of the board, and then when there's a regular meeting, that you can, you decide whether you want to continue the aid or not continue the aid. And the one we had with Mitchell County, it says that the department chair can request that of the emergency manager. Doesn't have to go to the board commission. As a department head, I would like some clarification. What does yours say?
Mine says, whereas, in the event of a non-declared disaster, if there is a request for assistance by another county, city, or township within one, within or out of the state of Kansas, and if Lincoln County, Kansas, or Mitchell County can provide assistance without unduly jeopardizing the protection of its own community, that this MOU will hereby authorize providing under the authority of KSA forty-eight dash nine five five, chapter twelve, article sixteen dash twelve, dash sixteen comma one seventeen, addendum eight, and it's attached to this, with all of the privileges and immunities provided therein, such assistance as may be required if there is a non-declared disaster situation that might require the use of county resources, the department head of this resource being requested acting as designee of the Lincoln County or Mitchell County has the ability to immediately render such assistance as may be required, provided that as soon as practical, the board of county commissioners shall meet and shall vote upon any continuing or additional assistance, as provided further, that no actions by the chairman of the board of county commissioners and his or her designee or by the board of county commissioners shall conflict with local or inter-jurisdictional disaster plan adopted by Lincoln County and Mitchell County pursuant to KSA forty-eight nine fifty and amendments thereto.
To the department head.
Department head, correct.
And the normal chain of.
That's in charge of that, that equipment, yes.
And the normal chain of command from a request from a department head is to the emergency manager, and then he is logistics, and he is the one that requests it from the other agency. Or vice versa. That's how the other counties do it. That's incident command and that's how it happens. So, um, the state resolution, the resolution that we made to go for the whole state, it says that it must be requested by the chairman of the board. I'm not sure that K-DIM will change this. I mean, we signed it with their wording, so. I, I would say that it's probably, I'm not going to speak for you, David. If, if something was requested and it was brought to your attention, that you would talk to the board chair. Okay.
Yeah.
I think this still suffices to do what we needed to do as far as the state. I just wanted some clarification about that. However, if you're going to do county by county, how far do you want to go out? Because if, if you're talking about north central Kansas, if you're talking about, you know, if they get requested to go to Wallace County, we wouldn't, I mean, you want a hundred and five agreements? Or do you want to not worry about another county that far out? How many counties over do you want to go?
Well, I'm sure, like in the event of that big fire in southern Kansas, they didn't have agreements with individual counties that were going on.
Didn't want to go to this one, so that would suffice?
State declaration, correct, correct.
Okay. So maybe just our homeland security region, north and central Kansas? Would that be the easiest way? If we get these drafts to where they're worded the way we want? Does that sound reasonable? To me, the homeland security region would make sense.
And again, as a member of the incident management team for, for the region, in, in the event of disasters like down at Reno County or Harvey County, coincidentally, the wildfires happened over at Russell Lake that, that same timeframe when all that was going on. But I had been contacted by the incident management team to be able to go to that fire, and I didn't even bother calling. But in, in the past, in that fire down there, it started previously, I would have contacted Al Joe, or, or the chair of the commissioners, and, and got his permission to go out of county, take my vehicle, take the resources to go down there and help.
I guess my, I just have two hesitations. The one that says with or, within or out of state. That seems a little expansive to me.
That's the state one.
This is the one they, they wrote up.
And again, I took the verbiage off of the, the state one that they had in place, too.
I'm just wasting my hesitation.
I mean, the fire in southern Kansas was also in Oklahoma. I'm sure that they, the units that were down there didn't necessarily stop it.
And if we respond to your county, we end up in Nebraska.
And I know, I know my predecessor, um, emergency manager, Rod Joe, had gone down to Louisiana for Katrina, and, and that was a resource that went out of state.
Well, I think the primary objective would be to get the surrounding counties that are connected to our borders, obviously. I mean, I think that's, that's great. Who are we missing here? Celine?
Well, I think we, we forward these to K-CAM.
Right.
And let them look at it. Let them make the decision.
And once I get done here, I can go up and get that information from Deborah and I'll, I'll contact them this morning.
And there, there may be hesitancy with other counties to sign them because most of them think the state one surprises, so.
Well, I mean, you have here again, in the event of a non-declared disaster, the key word is disaster. So I think everyone is under the impression that if it's an emergency, that's why the state created this, that is the purpose. Um, the discussion last week ensued out of a non-emergent situation where we lent county equipment to another county without our own faculty personnel, yeah, personnel involved. So that's kind of an isolated incident. I see what you're doing here, and I think this is great. You covered a lot of ground.
I believe.
I would be sad if they didn't want to cooperate, honestly.
Isn't there verbiage when a entity is overextended on their resources that it's automatically a emergency?
If you don't have the means to take care of that incident at that time, then you can automatically request from, from any other jurisdiction assistance with.
So you're saying there was an incident where our, where they came and obtained our equipment to, to attend to that incident?
I guess it would depend on your definition of an incident. They were out of ambulances. I'm sure to them that was an emergency. They, they vote, they had overextended their resources.
But what you just explained is that in the event of an incident, that can be declared an emergency at that time. I'm, I'm not sure that just saying we're out of staples means we have, we have an emergency, we need to borrow staples.
I don't think staples are part of an emergency.
That's a resource that you have rightly available.
It's a metaphor.
And, you know, part of the definition is when you've exhausted your, your local resources and there's the other potential loss of life. You know, I, we can't decide for Mitchell County whether they determine it was an emergency or not. And I don't know that we've asked them to say it was, you know, to, to them was an emergency or not, but.
And again, I'll just reiterate my concern. It's not the fact that we're helping someone. That's not, I have no animosity against the feeling of helping someone. It's the idea that we haven't taken steps such as this, which is a great forward progress, to indemnify ourselves because, you know, we're discussing healthcare insurance right now. And our claims history affects the premiums that we pay. Same concept with vehicle coverage. Everything we do insurance-wise, you know, we pay the price ultimately. So if we're not protecting ourselves, we're a tiny county. We have limited resources, more so than anyone else around us.
I think you are misled in the fact that we don't understand that. We do. We're trying to explain to you what we have been told by the state and by our regions and by homeland security and, and our emergency preparedness program, that they have all told us this is sufficient. We're trying to tell you our, our input, and you're, we understand your input. There needs to probably be something else. We're not disagreeing with you. We're just trying to explain to you how it's always been explained to us, further up the line.
I understand that, and it's very commendable that you guys took your time to be here. We have a missing person in this equation. It's the person who called the shots and didn't follow this chain of command that you said you recognize exists. So, you know, that's the.
I was called.
We just discussed that it goes through the emergency management. Did you miss that?
The state one goes directly to the board chair.
In the event of a disaster, it does.
And I can't tell you what the Mitchell County EMS, what document he was, he was working with. I don't know.
And again, there's a missing person in the equation because you're here speaking on behalf of someone who made a decision.
I'm speaking behalf of my department because we have to do the same thing. That's why I'm here. I'm not trying to speak for any other department. I, as a department head, want to do things the right way. So these are the agreements we have, and I think we do things the right way. I can understand your concern. I really do. But if, if we need the guidance on whether we're supposed to follow the state or this memorandum, or this one, or that one.
And that's just what we're trying to clear up or, or put a fine pencil to.
Well, and you, I mean, you've done it as far as what I can see. There may need to be some wording, but I think it looks good.
I think we need to get the wording.
And I'll, I'll.
However, it needs to be changed.
Communicate with K-CAM, or our insurance carrier, K-CAM, and, and communicate with them, and we'll read this on to them. And, or just one copy, and I have, you know, I'll explain that this copy will be changed to go to other counties surrounding us with the same verbiage.
Be sure, be sure and put it to state.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And David and, I believe, Michael sit on the Homeland Security Council now. That might be a conversation that you could have at Homeland Security also.
Right.
Because those are the people that we deal with on, on a regular basis. If they have any other agreements. If they do, I don't have copies of anything that anybody's asked me to sign or you to sign for public health. I don't know about fire. And that addresses fire and public health law enforcement.
So Dawn, Dawn could get requested to go up to Mitchell County.
Yeah.
Or, or anybody in the health, or, excuse me, in the courthouse.
Personnel, yeah. It encompasses a lot of people and a lot of departments, so. Okay, and on that note, this, this public health emergency law, um, these come along about every ten years. It probably is a good, since we're talking about law and, and emergencies and statutes and regulations and things. It is in Kansas City, Missouri at their health department. I did call and talk to, on the back, this M-A-R-C is who is Mid-America Regional Council is putting on the, uh, event. They said that there would be, um, the lawyer from, uh, emergency preparedness for Kansas and Missouri will both be there. The presenter is from CDC, so anytime, uh, there's a state law that is different from what CDC is presenting as federal, that they will bring that up and talk about it. So they're going to talk about incidents. So, um, a public health is incident just doesn't mean the health department. We have to have law enforcement, fire, emergency preparedness, so there'll be a lot of different, um, people there. But it would be nice. I'd like to go. David would like to go. It's free, other than the mileage and motel for probably the night before because it starts at eight thirty. I've sent an email to Jennifer to see if she would be interested in coming, but that's just, I think. But that's just, I think, um, it probably, a lot of the things that are going to talk about have to do with other parts of, um, emergency law and not just public health, I would imagine.
I don't have a problem. Yeah, I think it's a bad official.
Better deal with my budget constraints right now. I have an aunt that lives in Kansas City that gets offended if I don't stay with her when I'm in Kansas City.
That's nice.
So, yeah. So, again, that would be an expense just.
Have you asked her?
She gets offended when I come down.
Is she renting a bed and breakfast?
Well, yeah, I have one extra bedroom.
But, um, her, if one of you decided you would like to attend, it's July 25th, so it's coming right up and it's right after LEPC conference. But, um, they suggested that you just call that number and register. The website has not been working. So, um, on the back, the M A R C number, if you'd like to attend. Right now, they don't have a maximum and lunch is not included right now unless somebody finds a grant or something and decides to provide lunch. So, but right now lunch is not provided. So, but I think it would be a good, because like I say, these, emergency law doesn't come around very often because it's very gray and so.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David?
I don't think we're going to have anything to lay, Michael.
Yeah, it's how much you're on.
Yeah, when I was here two weeks, we agreed to come back in two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're coming in here shortly.
At nine.
Okay. Janet?
Okay.
Glenn? Last one.
No, last one maybe. Okay. I don't know. You do even know. Uh, yeah, I hope you all got the, yeah, sheets because they're kind of detailed and I wanted to give you time to, uh, look, look through them. Our North Central Flint Hills, uh, chairperson asked me to come and present these to you and, uh, of course, the thing that we want to look at is the bottom of the first page. And that shows, as you can see, uh, what you have, uh, paid, what has been received by them, uh, from you for, uh, the administrative funds and, uh, the Senior Care Act funds and, uh, through the last several fiscal years. And, um, down to, uh, of course, the coming fiscal year, 2018, uh, of course, nothing has been, uh, uh, received there. Then the second page is just information for you. The only thing that I might change on that second page that has the list of, okay, and I think I wrote it on there, my phone number. Does everybody have that change and my phone number? Okay. All right. And Glenn is here as the, as one of our county representatives on that area agency aging network. Okay. Then the next page gives you a detailed, um, list and of the services that have been provided, uh, to Lincoln County, uh, by the North Central Flint Hills Area Aging, on aging. And, um, so, um, a lot of different things listed there, perhaps some that you were aware of, some that I know I wasn't completely aware of. And, um, for a total, um, granting expenditure, uh, they expended 90,397 total administration for coordination of services. So the grand total of dollars invested for aging services in Lincoln County is 94,476. Okay. Now, um, partway down there, you'll see home-delivered meals. It's about two-thirds of the way down. Congregate meals and, uh, home-delivered meals. And then if you go to the next page, friendship meals, nutrition services, um, you'll see that we've had, uh, a little bit of a drop since last year, but a, a big increase from 2015 and 2016 and, um, the values involved there. And I might just say that, uh, personally, I think most of you know, I know Aljo knows because of Tom Kepp, I'm here up to date. I've been delivering, uh, meals to Barnard every day, anywhere from, uh, three to eight meals every day to Barnard. And I made a comment that, um, uh, one gentleman who gets other services such as physical therapy and, um, you know, home, home care services, he, I have noticed a, a great difference in him. He recognizes me, talks to me, carries on a conversation much, much more than when we first started delivering meals, uh, to him. And another gentleman who had knee surgery, uh, or knee replacement surgery, uh, is now back at his job and working and doing a part-time job and doing much, much better. So I can see the results, uh, of those meals. So, um, and an interesting thing that I was particularly shocked by was the total economic impact for Lincoln County on the bottom of that third sheet is 661,332 dollars. I think that's quite, to me, that was, uh, quite striking. So the thing that we wanted to primarily discuss with you is what, what the county wants to do as far as the, um, administrative funds and so forth and what you paid in past years. So just wanted you to see the, the results of that and have a chance to, uh, look at that. Glenn, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I believe you guys heard, Council on Aging has been paying the administrative funds, right? We've been paying the Senior Care Act, is that right?
Yes, yes. And I don't know, I haven't looked at in much detail at your budget to know whether, what your, what the county situation is, so it's entirely.
I don't think the county has ever paid this directly.
Directly to?
You're saying the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging has a funding request.
Uh-huh.
But from my understanding, that funding request has never been paid directly from the county. It's been paid through the Council on Aging for Lincoln County. Am I right, Don?
It used to be.
We used to pay a certain percentage of it. Probably the last five years, Council on Aging has taken up 100% of the administrative funds.
I think when.
Yeah, council.
Shortly after they got their mill increase, I'll admit that they started paying.
But they're only paying the care act, is what you're saying?
We pay the senior care act.
Oh, we, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's the opposite way, yeah.
Okay.
The county pays the senior care and we pay the administrative.
Okay, I understand now.
That's one. It was confusing to me at first. It takes a few years on, on the position to get it done.
Anybody else have any questions for Jan, Glenn?
I assume you're willing to continue paying your share.
Yes, we plan on, uh-huh.
Isn't this the reason that we levy the money for the senior programs to sponsor things like this? Would that be the reason that we have that extra mill levy? I mean.
Well, I don't know as it was designated when it was voted on. I don't know as that was, if they designated in there, but it's the fact that they were receiving enough money that they, they could do it. So, well, you know, we have things to pay. But I don't think there was anything designated.
I don't think, I've, I've looked, I've looked through the mill levy regulation several times and, and, you know, I don't, I don't see anything there. I think it's just been an agreement between the county commissioner, between the county and the, and the Council on Aging. For as long as I, Glenn, do you remember any other? For as long as you've been.
I haven't been on it that long, but that's the way I understand.
Yeah.
I don't think there was any verbiage on the ballot question.
No, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for your attention. Don, have the auditors said when they're going to come to work on the budget?
It's July 17.
July 17?
Yeah. And he also said that it would be considered a work session.
Okay.
And not.
All right.
And right now, it's during Mitchell County, Baccalaurian and Austin County, we're filling four hours.
Okay.
I'm sorry, how do we have a closed meeting with all the commissioners present?
It's called a work session.
Where, but how do we do that? I mean, under state statute, if we are convened as a board, it has to be an open meeting.
You can have a work session.
Where's that?
On, up in the.
Okay. The courthouse guest?
Courthouse.
Yeah. It is the Capitol. Yes.
We're ready, Michael. Come on. You'll buff it in?
Not soon.
How you doing?
Pretty good.
Good. This is Tanner Yost with Kirk and Michael Engineering in Ellsworth.
Hi, Tanner Yost. Tanner Fenn.
Tanner Yost.
Yeah, nice to meet you too.
Tanner's here with some options for the drainage up on 30th North and Union. We're also potentially looking at some spots on Union also. Probably won't be able to fix them all at once if we decide to fix them, but I think in the future that if we fix one, we should probably fix all of them. He's got several different options here for us, so.
Yes, just to kind of explain what we did. Michael asked us to look at a couple of different options. I've got a couple of different, a little handout for you guys showing the location of these. As you can see in the map on the first page, you can see down on this right lower-hand side of the page, there's location one, location two, and location three. Um, so we went ahead and ran a drainage area for each of these locations. I wrote that up in the upper part-hand corner up there. So you can see location one has about 3.7 square miles of drainage area. Location two has, um, location one actually drains in location two, so there's about 3.9 square miles at location two. And in location three, there's 1.91 square miles. So that's what we usually start off doing, running a drainage area at those locations. This kind of tells you kind of what permits are needed. The next page in your handout, looks like you, talks about some of the permits that are required. So, um, you can see this, this is pretty much, um, straight off the DWR's website. You can see there's a little map kind of right in this area. And you can see Lincoln County is in zone two. And so pretty much if the drainage area is greater than two square miles, you need to notify DWR and either do a general, general permit or a, um, full-blown application for permit. So you can see location one and two are both over two square miles, so you would need to contact DWR.
Can you combine those to one application or do you have to do separate for each?
Um, that's a good question. I think.
I believe they're separate.
Yeah, usually we just do them separate. I don't think we've ever really combined the two.
Just trying to see paperwork.
Yeah, no, no, it makes sense.
State wants their hand in the extra money with each permit.
That makes sense too.
Yeah. And so, um, and if you go to the next handout, you can see some of the state statutes on what's binding this and all that stuff. Um, and the next one, that's a general permit worksheet. So this is what's going to have to be filled out. And we're probably going to put in a bigger structure, I would assume so, because we've run some issues there. Um, and this is a general application. So if, uh, the open area is going to be bigger than existing now, which it most likely will, um, and then the proposed rise in the average road grade, if the flood plain's less than a foot, you can do this, this general permit. It's a little quicker, a little easier.
What cost on that?
It's going to be a hundred bucks.
For each permit?
Uh, just for the DWR. So just this one's going to be a hundred bucks. So you send this in.
So we're doing one of those for two of the three sections, because one section's on your two square.
Yeah, yeah, one, three, yeah. And it also included the application for permit. That's if sometimes counties want to put something smaller, it's oversized. I just thought I'd put that in there for you guys. And with that, we also emailed the KDWP or Wildacan Parks. We usually send them an email, ask them if there's any special mitigations or if there's any endangered species in this, at this location, and then they usually respond. A lot of the times, the answer is no, so you don't have any special mitigation. And some of those might be, down in Kingman County, we do a lot of work. They'll come back and it'll be like an Arkansas darter, like a fish. And we'll have to bury the bottom of the structure a foot, just allow for some passage of that. But have we done any notify Wildacan Parks about anything?
I haven't had anything yet.
Okay, okay. So usually we send them an email, and then they'll come back and say, you need an action permit. So if they find an endangered species or something, then you'll have to fill that out, and they'll give us some special mitigations with that.
There's a separate cost for that?
Uh, no. Nope.
Which in return could change the size of your structure also. You know, if they require you to be embedded one foot.
With that extra height.
If you've already secured a structure, then you're going to be short yourself, whatever size, by one foot. Could be up to 10 square feet of drainage could be living on your structure.
Right. So like the structures we looked at, the options I'm going to get to, we just put bottom of the structure pretty much right at the channel level. We didn't embed it a foot. So it depends, if they would come back and say, we're going to have to decrease those a foot, then. The next, we also notify the Corps of Engineers, and that is application for that. And that, I don't think there's a fee on that as well. So those are, those are the three permitting agencies that we usually notify. Kirk and Michael, we do what's called our projects. Michael told me, you know, it'd be nice if I came and kind of talked about it. So here's the application, so.
Yes, thank you. That was very helpful to see.
Okay. So with that, we looked at a couple of different options. The first option, when we went out, went out and saw the dislocation, there was a landowner that came by and said, McPherson Concrete has some 10 by 5 precast concrete.
Oh, there you go.
Um, there's some 10 by, 10 by 5 precast concrete boxes in the person concrete, and they were going to give us kind of a discounted price of about.
$200?
$200 per inner foot. We went, we took that drainage area, and then we used some rain intensity maps from the state of Kansas, and we came up with a two-year, a four-year, or a two-year, a five-year, a 10-year, 25, and 100-year storm. Typically, for a low-volume road, we typically see them designed for a 5 to 10-year storm, and it's just a probability. So a five-year storm is going to be 20% chance that you're going to get that storm within the year. A two-year, you've got a 50% chance of getting that storm. So it's kind of probability that that storm's going to happen. So with that, we looked at that 10 by 5 precast concrete box, and it did meet the five-year storm. So it did just meet that five-year storm. But with those concrete boxes, we typically, depends how, we typically put wings on them. So we'll tie some wings and put in an apron for scour, that kind of stuff. And then we usually set those on concrete or some foundation stabilization, that kind of stuff also. So that was option one we looked at. Option two was actually pouring a concrete box in place, and that was a two-cell, two cells and then eight by five, so each cell had an eight-foot span by five-foot tall.
There are already some existing structures. Are we talking about getting rid of those and whatever we're doing is.
Yes, that would be removing those structures. Yep, there is a two 30-inch, or no, three 30-inch, and then one 36-inch. The 36-inch was pretty rusted. The bottom had some, you can see dirt underneath it, it's pretty rusted out. And there's two others 30-inch, five, and a twelve. Yeah, that would be removing the, moving those four pipes.
We left them in place with elevating road, those pipes would have to be extended also, so you'd be adding additional pipe to each one of those structures.
So you're just tearing out and starting new?
I take it be a better option. I think you're going to have the tendency to collect trash and silt those boxes, or smaller structures that don't carry the bigger flows.
Okay, so option two is that two-cell, eight-foot by five-foot concrete box. This is contractor prices, so a contractor would come out, pretty much pour the, the wings and the box and everything. It was about 112, 112,000, a little over 112,000. That'd be a contractor prices. And option three, Michael asked if we can maybe look at a little bigger storm event. So we went and looked at the 10-year storm event, so decreases your chance of road overtopping. That, we put a three-cell box in, seven-foot span by five-foot tall, and it's about 135,000 for that. And then the last option that we kind of looked at was the railroad yard down in Oklahoma. Bob Stray, he sailed railroad tankers. They take old railroad tankers, they cut them in half, they weld a floor in them, and weld a head wall on each side of those. And we did look at that in the hydraulics, and it looks like you can install two of those. And typically, counties will place them side by side and they'll weld them together, and they're only about nine-foot diameter each, so we like to keep it underneath 20, so then you guys don't have to come out and pay for inspection, because it's not considered a bridge. So saves money there. So we looked at putting two of those in. It did meet the five-year storm. And some of the other counties, it depends on what you guys want to do, but they'll come in and they'll drive some sheet piling to build wings around each side. And then they will come in and weld on like a three-foot tall plate on the front of them for scour, so water can't undermine it again or get underneath them. And Bob Stray, he emailed us and.
Was that sheet piling?
Yes.
Yep, we heard a picture of it.
And then he, we went and got prices from him last week, and with both those two half-ground tankers installed, it'd be about, or for him to come out and deliver them to the side, it'd be a little over 18,000. But that doesn't include putting wings on.
And all that.
Yes. And then Michael, do you have, you would have to get a crane to.
Yes, we'd have to get a crane rental.
He puts a steel floor in?
Yep, yep, and that.
We put one in South of Vesper here three years ago, four years ago.
Yeah, that was one of these?
Yep.
Would you say steel floor?
A lot smaller than that.
Steel floor, you said?
Yes.
Steel floor, you meant this?
No.
You can see the bottom, actually, this is kind of one of the ones that's kind of embedded. Yeah, there's actually steel flooring on the bottom of that.
Eliminates your scour of the bridge.
Yeah.
We're trying to see what the.
And that's, it's pretty quick. Some counties can do it, and I don't want to hold you to the standard, but, you know, four days, they can, yeah, so the road's down, not very long, it opens back with the traffic pretty quick.
What's a crane rental?
I think we'd only need it for a day, just offload, swing in, if we had everything prepped and ready to go. We could organize the delivery and crane rental on the same day.
What about the sheet piling?
Yeah, do we have a, do we have a total estimated cost there for that option?
Well, we, we can push that in with our vibratory compactor, or excavator. No peg and nip is, we can push it in usually four or five feet, no problem.
David, do you have any knowledge of those alone?
Like a lead time? He said, there's one that he quoted, he did have on him, so they're sitting in his yard. To get them shipped, yeah, kind of depends what they have going on. I would think a couple of weeks maybe would be probably good, one of those in, or both those in. But then the permits, the permits take a little while. So if Michael go ahead and tells us to do it, we can get it, we can get the permits out in a couple of days. Then it kind of depends who you get with the permitting agencies, so it may take up to two months before you hear back from them. Sometimes it's two weeks, sometimes it's two months.
If we do it now, we could do it before the frost and before the winter weather potentially is what we're looking for.
Is there, are you about using those on all three locations, or?
So location one and two, the hydraulics are pretty much the same. Location two had a little bit bigger drainage area, but the channel coming into it wasn't quite as steep, so they were pretty much the same, so you could put, location one and two, you could put those tankers in, and they would meet the five-year storm. If you want to meet a bigger storm event.
It's not going to eliminate overtopping.
Yeah. It's still going to get overtopped from time to time. It's going to be better than what it's there now. And location three, we haven't, Michael, just to look at one or two for now, we haven't looked at.
Your location three, where the dam is?
No. There's another spot between site two and where the dam's at. I'm still working with DWR on a dam issue there, so.
Well, dollar-wise, it's pretty obvious to the choice, dollar-wise.
What, are we able to perform all of the labor if we do the crane rental, bringing those, the railroad tankers and do the excavation?
Yes. It's going to be mainly excavation and fill, and some welding, tow wall on each end, and putting in the wings.
Probably not much fill really, if that's a railroad tanker.
They're about four, four and a half foot tall.
Did you see, have you seen? A couple feet. I saw, I could see the picture of the railroad tanker.
I still think there's going to be a couple feet of fill. Depends on how we do design, we have about that far in it, but I would like to leave a low spot away from the bridge to act as a spillway instead of washing over the structure, so that will limit some fill there and trash.
Time-wise, it absolutely would be the fastest. Or, or structure, that road's going to be closed.
For a long time, and the one by my house, that one would be good.
Yeah.
Typically, 40 working days, I think, on these type of structures, so it'll be over a month.
Minimum.
Yeah, minimum, if everything goes okay.
No, it's. We have a young and experienced crew, but it's not going to happen probably in four days. I will say that in front of them. We're going to have to work with them, I'm sure a person on the crew right now, so.
Who would be the crane operator?
Whoever we contract with, we'd have to do a rental. We don't even.
They'll come out of the line?
Yeah, there's.
I think the last time I rented one was like, the 10-year build, like $400, something like that. So we've got the last one now, probably. Now you're depending on how big, how big the crane you need to.
If we could talk to Bob and get weights and all that stuff, yeah. And then send that to your crane.
The captain of the crane gets care.
Have we spent, what have we spent out of our, out of our Culver's fund? It's considered a Culver, right?
Hopefully.
Yeah, this would be a.
Should be able to get it there, but yeah. We've spent, I don't have that much in my budget.
The 18,000?
I don't believe so. I would have to look, but we've not quite been able to pull it this year.
Well, I would say we went through the budget and see where we're at. You know, if we just don't have the money, we'll have it in there for the rest of the first year.
I have last close budget here, so I'm sorry, I'm everything today.
Do you have a time when you're, have more truck traffic in and out of there than even, than other days? There are other times of the year, David? Well, first of October through January, we're delivering birds multiple times a day. Five, six times a day. And your other way, we'd have to go to the Green Valley Road and more or less, if it's west. Depends on which facility and whoever's going to, we got four different facilities. There's speed trucks. October through December, we're getting two semi-loads to meet the feed, so. So prior to or after? The one, you're the, the site two, you're talking about Hollywood and Claws. We could miss that.
Yeah, what would we do?
Site one, which I assume is one on 30, is by my house, that would be a little more challenging.
Now, this is through April, this is.
So we're just looking here, flat and fine, okay, so there's one more after that?
I don't know if I'm main purchase, but I'll, but just to be sure.
The one, well, generated on 5/9, did we get them for June? Generated June, the first week of June? I don't have it with, I don't have it.
Yeah, we got, we got one, Jen.
Do you have that one?
That's June 6, 7 is the date on that, so.
Yeah, that's the one we need. This is the month of the year.
Yeah, it's the same.
Same?
Approximately 8,600 left in the whole.
Do you make, do you make requests this department had to transfer funds within your budget? If you have, if you know you're, like, let's say you haven't used up 50% in one fund that you know you're not going to have expenses coming out of for the rest of the year, do you make those requests to just change that on your, to transfer?
I don't think I've ever had a fund in shape that I could transfer and be comfortable really. Because special bridges designed specifically for bridges.
It's got a, right.
Special roads is what we use for the transfer for chip seal or reimbursements to put back into chip seal, no hand bridges, so. As we started line iteming the chip seal.
Well, it looks to me like it's the best option. I guess if we can find the money this year, not hold. Yeah, it's, you know, that's like before spring, I guess, before rain, so. Been a while, kind of winter, we have.
The 18,000 was just for the site one, right? Site, site two would be another 18,000.
Well, that was just for the box itself.
Yeah, but.
There would be additional expense on top of that.
Do we need two for each site, is what he's asking?
Yeah, but the 18,000 is two, I have it for site one, and then there will be another 18,000 for site two.
So 36 total, and just materials purchased for them?
Yeah.
Not the wing materials, just the Culver?
Just the Culver itself.
Exactly. And they can actually come out and deliver it to the site.
Maybe I'll have to, I'll have to crane it on one.
What can we do with number three, what he suggested with McPherson having a precast?
I don't think you need that big one on three.
We haven't actually dove into it.
I'm not sure what three is, but I assume that's over the hill to the east.
Yeah, it drains just shy of two square miles, 1.9, but the hydraulics are almost 50% less, so. Correct? If you just put a five-foot round in there, would that be enough in there?
Now, actually looking at it, I don't want to tell you something. It is, yeah, there is, like Michael said, it's about half the square miles. I'd like to sit down and look at it, and maybe use some other options.
This railroad tanker placed, you said, in Oklahoma, is it a private business, or?
It's called the Railroad Yard, and I believe so.
So he purchased from the railroad and then he does resale?
Yes.
From numerous places.
And they fabricate them specifically for this purpose, and other commercial kinds?
Yeah, we've had, we were used to car for.
Yeah, we bought stuff from that group. Put one of those structures in South of Vesper here three, four years ago. Put one of those structures in south of Vesper here three, four years ago.
What are you thinking lifespan would be on something like that?
Oh, on these? Since there's not water, because it was dry when we went out there. A lot of times you'll see where the water's touching that structure, um, so it gets moisture in the air. Right there is where you have a lot of rusting. With the structure not actually having water in it all the time, um, I would say, just depends on the, on the tanker, but I would say forty, fifty years, I think, quite a bit.
Yeah.
And they're really strong. Um, we've actually, have had like ten other counties do this. Like Barber County, when I talked about Kingman to put some in. Clark County, the one I'm actually acting as the county engineer, we put a couple in. But there, a lot of counties are going to them because they're cheap and quick, and yeah.
And quick.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Well, I guess if we've gone through, we've got, we've got some money, we'll, I suppose we're going to do, if we end up doing one this year and one next year, we're better than do the road first, right? Because they're, you know, since an increase in the flow at David's house and then having to go right down the hill to the other.
Trying to take this on a broader perspective, if this is something that's applicable across the board, I mean, we're having a situation with Culverts, bridges, you name it. If this is something that is one of the faster, more economical resources, could we put together some kind of comprehensive plan where we map out a few more sites and do like one big? I mean, I feel like if we keep, if we keep doing one a year, or one little section a year, we're not really going to get ahead on this, I think.
Well, I think probably more this year is talking about, we don't have, but...
Well, I'm saying financially, we would have to work that out in a separate, we, we would have to designate X amount and do some overhauling on the whole department. But I guess I'm thinking, if you're, if you have to do this much planning for each location and you have to do all that prep work, we can send in forty-five permits for all I care as far as getting things, um, even keel across the board, you know? But how, what I was getting at with the railroad, um, supply place, how, what is their inventory like, do you know?
It's revolving. That, you can't be guaranteed to have that exact same pipe every time you call down. And they vary in sizes. They got many different sizes. I think they can usually get ahold of just about anything if you request a particular size. But then they're, you do have the lag time of production and all of that.
Yeah, yeah. If you give them advance notice, hey, we're going to need ten of these, then I'm sure they can get it made.
But a lot of the places that we've got to deal with, though, we don't have the depth to put them in. You know, some of those Culverts out there are only two that we put. So, they're not going to be the quick fix for every situation?
No, but I mean, first, the, the alternative of having a contractor come and pour a two or three-cell port structure, I mean, we're looking at almost as much money as we're spending on some bridges right now, you know? We, I think that last bridge was a hundred seventeen thousand. We just, am I, I don't know how to look that in my news.
About a hundred.
Maybe it's one seventy, one seventy, sorry.
That came out of our budget is like two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, you know, total. It's on an eighty-twenty program, let's stay.
Okay.
Well, I guess that's where we're at. See what we've got for money and what we've got from there, but... I think, I ain't got the workable plan either.
Well, I, I would still offer some financial assistance on thirty.
Okay.
That one, that.
The one on the road?
That's number one, location one.
Just right south of his house, the location one. You know, I guess...
That's mostly my traffic on there. It's not a hundred percent my traffic, but mostly being my business, so...
My biggest question is, though, would you be satisfied with five-year storm frequency than a ten-year, twenty-five-year, or something like that? Like I said, this is not going to eliminate water overtop. It's just going to not be quite as frequent. Because right now, we're probably set up at maybe a two-year.
Yeah, it's less than a two.
Less than a two.
Yeah, I change every year.
Well, and you're not going to get the same wash. I mean, those rocks that were washed off the road there, you're not going to have that when you have those structures, like you said, welded together. I mean, you have those separate structures with the fill in between. It was just running it out.
It can, it'll still do that if it overtops.
It's going to go over, yeah.
It's just we're going to build it away from the structure where it's not overtopping right at the structure.
But you're still talking about...
By raising, by raising the road, the water will go, will go over the top of the structure, go over the top down the road a little bit.
It'll have, I'd say anywhere from one to two feet of fill over it. It's probably what is best engineering for it. And then to the north, I'm guessing the way I remember it out there, we'd probably have a one-foot lull from the rest of the road. That way, that can act as a spillway, so the water does not flow directly over your structure and try washing your structure out.
Because it's easier to replace the dirt there than the ground structure.
Yes.
What are you thinking about?
Financial assistance, five thousand.
Uh, uh... What about dirt? I mean, dirt's, dirt's...
You can have all the dirt you want right away.
Okay, that's in addition to the dirt. Is that what you're thinking of you can do that?
Well, let's, let us look through and see.
I'm providing dirt, not the dirt work.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, yeah.
You're not bringing your dozen? Let's, let us do some digging here and see what we've got, bring the consults with me. And then we'll go down to the other one after, after the year, I guess, and... We'll do some research through the budget and see what we're... I appreciate the fact that you're willing to help out on the road.
Well, like I say, that one is mostly my traffic, so I, I, I feel a little financial responsibility on that.
When you were talking about renting the crane for a potential day, are you assuming that it could cover those three locations in a day, or one?
No, just one.
So, we're talking about multiple things, surely?
Yeah, we won't have all three of them tore out at the same time, now we'd be a nightmare.
Do we know what the weight of these are roughly, so we know what kind of crane we need?
Uh, I don't have any of that information.
David probably has that, huh?
Yeah, that Bob's great. Send him any other day, and that's what I can do.
You ready? Anything else?
Well, I mean, we have the budget, so what are you suggesting we do?
Do you have that?
We got eighty-six hundred plus the five would put me in thirteen-six, so...
So, we're going to have to find money somewhere else in the...
At least eight to ten thousand.
I think let's, let's, let's find the money and then we'll make a decision.
I'm saying, how do we find, like, we have to find the money here at the table, you know, like...
Well, I think he needs to look through his budget and see where he's going to be at the end of the year on his line item. I mean, we've got, we've got six months to go there until the end of the year, so I think he needs to forecast out where his, where he's going to be on his line item.
There's been places I haven't spent money because we didn't do a lot of work this spring due to the rain. Some of the material expense there could be pushed this way.
But I think he needs the opportunity to look through that and see where the money's coming from. I don't think there's objection to it in the garage here.
No, but what I'm again saying is from, from a topographical view here, like we're looking at on the map, I mean, this isn't the only location, so we can't just budget into next year for this particular project. I think we need to look at it as part of a whole assessment that we're going to take a large amount of money and do these type of fixes, because if he's saying almost forty years worth of projected value, you know, I'm not sure...
You have to remember under tax law, so the money's going to have to come basically within a budget that you have now.
Yes.
You don't consider this economic development?
Well... I don't know what's at there, huh? I'd have to think about that for a while. I think roads, roads and, road and bridge is a department on its own.
Right, but I'm suggesting an investment in the department that is substantial to take on several projects like this for, let's say, the next year, putting together a comprehensive plan, which we can utilize some of this, you know, um, information that you've provided as far as looking at our problem areas. We know this is one. We've had the same issue here for multiple years. I think we have a handful of those we could look at and do everything wants to make a substantial investment and focus on that. I mean, you're going to have to be using crew members for however many weeks this takes, you know, instead of doing your routine duties at that time, so... I just think it's a Band-Aid to do one of these and not at least the three and/or look at that whole area and see what else we need to do and make that substantial investment. You're going to rent a crane, rent it for a week, two weeks, you know, not back and forth six times throughout the year, or once this year and once next year, and we're always behind.
I think we need to do one and see how it goes.
Yeah, I think there's too much lag time to leave. We're not going to go out and open up three holes and wait for a crane and delivery at one time and have it swung and set in like one day or two days.
Maybe you could help explain how other counties have, um, taken on strategic plans for this type of a situation?
Some of the other counties will go, and if they do identify some bad air locations, then they will kind of sit down and kind of figure out what they can put in each of those locations. What I've seen are some maps, and they'll just identify, say, five or six locations, and then they'll, they'll budget to improve those over the course of the year. So, yeah, some other counties have been taking that approach.
And I think what, I'm not suggesting we just rip holes in every road, but, you know, you can have the materials delivered. If we have permission to store something on the edge of your field while it's sitting there waiting for the few weeks, you know, you move from one to the next, to the next, and, but you have to have a plan. I think the idea of doing this patchwork, saying, let's do one this year and see how it goes. I mean, we're not really going to, we're not going to get an advantage on this type of a situation, and we have more of these in the county. This is one assessment in one area, and we have this kind of across the board.
I don't know what you're going to gain by storing on some places, having a crane out there loading, and then when you go for a minute, have a crane back out and put it in, so. If they can deliver on schedule...
Can you not drive over those once they're installed?
Yeah, once they're installed.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you're talking about, let's say, a week's project for each, each location? You know, you're, you're, we're talking about doing a week's project, moving on to the next week's project, and you're able to utilize that portion of the road to get to the next portion of the road. So, storing them makes absolute sense, because once you move on from that place, you're not waiting on the delivery of the next one. It's there.
I think you can schedule the delivery for most part.
So, you want to excavate in place and then just come back to it and back? You'd have to have the crane setting in place, so we'd have three open holes at one time.
Well, you're, while you're setting one, wouldn't be, the, the dirt crew be working on the next excavation? I mean, you would...
It's all the same crew.
It's the same crew, yes. Two-man crew.
Well, and this is part of the problem, you know? Maybe we need to look at a, a one or two-year plan, and this is where we start with this location, knowing and doing what we're doing here and moving on to the next one.
Is there any opportunity to pull, when you got something like this going on, full motor grader operators in the middle of the summer when you don't need to be played roads to work with some of this stuff? And if they need to play roads, the other maintainer operators rotate into their area to play when they're busy working on some of that stuff?
We utilize spread divers, we utilize whoever's available.
Well, and we can hire Timber and Beal. I mean, there are...
I don't know about the crane situation. Can you, let's say you were going to do three of them once. Can you rent a crane for police? I mean, you'd have to operate it yourself rather than one that operator comes with it.
Skinner did a point, you got to have a certified operator.
Certified operators is what's for a lot of counties with crane operations.
That's why we got two cranes we had. If it hasn't inspection, we didn't have an operator. That crane stuff has gotten really tough.
Well, I mean, we're looking at potentially contracting out some of the work, but I think it makes sense to do as much of it ourselves as we can, looking at the, the price difference, you know? I see this as a doorway, an opening to a potentially big project that we could strategically plan. If we're not going to address his immediate situation in the next six months, why not spend that six months preparing a strategic plan for next year?
I think the plan is to get the one at his house in the next, before October, possibly, I mean, before your travels start. I think we can find the money to do it this year, but I don't think, you know, I think we can find enough money to do that this year.
Could the web fund be used for this project?
I didn't hear what you said.
Could the web fund be used for this project?
I think that... If you got a long-term goal of some kind, possibly, I don't think you can use it for any of those projects.
I, I totally agree with that statement, which is why I was suggesting a comprehensive strategic plan, using this as the primary platform in the initial stage.
Kind of leads to an additional point that Tanner worked up a proposal to be, instead of, as an on-call, be considered the Lincoln County engineer, where he would meet with us once a month, and we would have time to sit down, look at these locations, and kind of get a plan.
Yes, we do this for eight other counties. Um, they hire us, come down one time a month. Um, usually we come to the first commission meeting, um, meet with you guys, and then usually in the afternoon, if Michael has any of these areas that he needs to go look at, run hydraulics, that kind of stuff, then we'll go look at those areas. Um, and we're in Ellsworth, so we're only thirty miles away, it's really close. So, I do it for Clark County, so I'm like the Clark County engineer, um, and it's, it's been very helpful to them. They can kind of get a different aspect. And what this costs, I guess, is usually eight-twenty-five a month, plus mileage. And so, it's, right now, the, the rate's fifty-three cents per mile. So, it's about twenty-six-fifty a mile, so it'd be about eight-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and fifty cents a month. And I'd come down, probably here by eight. I can, I'll meet with Michael, I can meet with you guys, and then give some, like, technical guidance on stuff, whatever, whatever Michael sees beneficial.
So, included in this fee, if he wanted you to go look at five or six different locations, it's still the same rate?
Yeah, that day, yeah. Yeah, we say use that day.
Like, you got my whole day, go look at all those locations. Uh, I know Clark County, we've got two wind farms going on, so I've been running around. You know, the wind farm's been causing damage, so I'll go look at pipes and, you know, roads that have less gravel, that kind of stuff, and usually fill the whole day up. Uh, but yeah, we say use it, use the whole day. It's your day. And it's, yeah, it has been...
What about, I'd say you ask two or three of these locations to be ones you deal with. You do the hydraulic studies and all that stuff. Is that included in this, or?
Um, if I got enough time in the day, see, we're only, we're close to Ellsworth, so I can get back and maybe do it that evening or something. Um, if it takes any kind of plans or anything, then we probably do that by the hour, some additional work. So, yeah, we could, we could work with you on that.
If something like this...
Yeah.
Probably would be included.
Right, right.
What kind of timeline contract?
What kind of timeline, just?
Monthly?
I just, yeah, it'd be, it'd be per month. Um, so we invoice, uh, every two months, every month.
Are you talking about a minimum of so many months' contract?
Um, I think it's pretty much, it's open, as long as you guys want to take it.
Definitely not anything that was, um, thought about budget time, so none of this is budgeted for. And I don't think you're looking for a decision today. It was just something that we've kind of briefly discussed and thought we'd bring it to your attention as an option, you guys, and...
Right, well, and I would say if we were going to move forward with a comprehensive plan, that would definitely be something we should look at and bid out and, you know, potentially do that. But if we're only going to do a piece of patchwork here, maybe we can talk about just this item on thirtieth. And what you've done already is a study. Now, is this something that we paid for? And what you've done already is a study. Now, is this something that we paid for, the study that you did?
Yes, so I, I carded a few hours to come down. What was it, last week?
So, who does the permits? We do?
They'll go through, or me, I guess we can just.
Yeah, whoever, if you wanna use us, we can do them. It'd probably take an hour for us to do them.
What's the length of time on the permits that they're good for? If we, if we got a permit for all three locations, but we only have finances to do one, how, what length of time do we have?
Um, I think if, if you stay in touch with them and let them know how your project progressing, then they can go for a long time, as long as you keep them informed.
The next fiscal year?
Yes, yep. If you keep them informed, um, once they're over, I think the Corps of Engineers, you have to tell them, saying, "The project's done," so then they can close out in their books. But as long as you keep them informed, then they can go on.
So, for location one, at this point, since you've already been employed for this project, what additionally do we need from you? If he can fill out the permits, what do we need from you then to continue with location one?
If you fill the permits out and you don't want any other plans or drawings or anything, then you can probably do it yourself. But I would recommend using this and hopefully get that. Trying to think if there's anything to sign off on as far as engineer.
I mean, do you feel like if, if we got the permit process underway and you could do one more site visit? Or how, I mean, how are you, what's your protocol for a situation like this? So, we get the permits going, we don't, we obviously haven't made any purchases yet, but at this point, what do you do?
Well, typically, like Ellsworth County, Rick, he just has us on retainers, so every time he identifies these locations, he calls us, says, "Hey, I need a rented drains area and some hydraulics. I wanna put this in. Is it gonna work?" And then we'll tell him yes or no, and if yes, and he wants to move forward, then he just calls us and says, "Hey, can you do the permits?" And then we put the permits together, send it off, and then we notify him, "Hey, we have the permits done. Go."
What do you charge to do the permit process?
Oh, it's, we usually do it by the hour. It's an hour, two hours, just depending on structure type. I would say two to three hundred bucks.
Have you ever done these?
Not a complete set.
Do you feel capable?
I would have to sit down and study a little bit, study them. All of our big projects have been done by engineers, so the engineers have always done.
Yeah, we're talking a couple hundred dollars. And then they do them all the time. They probably have a lot better, they probably have a lot better relationship with.
Right, yeah.
They do it, I guess, than we do.
Yep. I've got all these guys' emails and stuff, so we, we do a lot of these, so they can know. It's pretty good. Yeah. Cause in here it says the proposed rise in the average road grade due to flood plain less than one foot. That'd be something for, hard for Michael to do, to be honest. You don't have access to all the, you know, software. So, we use software, some hydraulic software to plug in their drainage area and all that stuff to verify that. And so, that'd be Michael pretty much just saying, "Yes."
I guess.
Yeah, I guess, pretty much.
And you want three hundred dollars for that one, right?
Well, it'd be, it'd be to do a general permit, so we'd do, doing this application. And it'd also be notifying Wallock and Parks to see if there's any special mitigations for endangered species, that kind of stuff. And then we'd also notes by the Corps of Engineers about this project also. So, it would be.
All of it.
Yeah, we, we, we contact all three of those.
But these are the actual applications that you gave us, right?
Yeah, yeah. Michael had asked for some information, so.
Well, if you feel unsure.
I haven't had a chance to study.
I mean, we could always, you could maybe perjure the situation and learn and do them in the future. I mean, I can see how we need you out there again as the project commenced to just have an oversight, but how do we get this process started? Did you wanna approve the permit so that they can work on the permit process?
Well, I think we could, I think we could go through the permits.
Cause you said it's gonna take weeks even to get that underway. We shouldn't delay that, in my opinion.
And DWR, they're gonna come out, right?
DWR? Um, no, sometimes, you never know. Sometimes they'll just show up.
Three of them. We've had them out here a time or two and they don't like them coming out.
Is this under contractual when you do?
Well, we don't even know for sure what we're doing on three, right?
Right, yeah.
So, I would say do one and two.
On the permits?
But if they're, if he's saying that it can... Well, you were saying you don't need a permit for three if it's under two square miles, so we don't even need one.
He doesn't know for sure.
For KD.
So, what, uh, DWR, since it's less than two square miles, you won't need to notify them. But we would still recommend talking to Wallock and Parks and then sending it into the Corps.
But those ones are free. Those applications are free. So, we're only talking about spending money for two applications for DWR.
Division of Water Resources?
Division of Water Resources for the first two locations. And they may continue that as we progress with the project, if, you know, if it's approved in the first place.
Right, right.
I move to allow the department head to proceed with obtaining permits for the locations discussed on the thirtieth and Union?
You're authorized. You can do that, perfect. Michael did it.
I, I think that's at his discretion, you know, if he feels that he needs help on this one.
As long as he has that option, I'll second the motion.
Motion is to.
Just thirtieth and Union? Or the one, one Union?
One and two.
Location one, two, and three, because you're, you don't have to pay a fee. Well, you know, we're discussing, let's do the motion. He seconded.
Motion is to get permits for locations one and two, right, proceed with permits for.
All three, to allow the department head to proceed, obtain permits.
Do you know what kind of structure you need on three yet? See, that's the deal. He doesn't know what the structure he needs on three.
Yeah, we just, he probably prioritized this. He said one and two, three, we'll see. And so, we looked at one and two, three. I can go back this afternoon and run it and tell you today, if you want me to.
You'll need to know your structure before you do your permit.
Yeah, right, right.
And if they change their decision, or not their decision, but if they find something, we may have to change what we originally designed the structure as to meet what they require. But I do not see that potential based on historical factors, but you never know.
I'm confused. Are we doing permits for one and two, or are we doing permits for one, two, and three, or?
I really think.
What was the motion?
I really think that we need to know what structure we're putting in there.
I, I think we do one and two, to be honest. One and two. Let me go look at it and then I'll propose some sizes to Michael. And then we'll decide if we wanna move forward to three.
Okay.
How about this? How about you move to do all three and then if it, you decide it's, yeah, not feasible, then we're just doing.
It's just giving permission to obtain the permits. I move to allow the department head.
Well, we got a motion on the floor.
And that's what I said originally. I didn't say one and two.
You're including one, two, and three.
Move till, I thought move till allow the department head to proceed with obtaining permits on the thirtieth and Union.
Correct, and all locations are on thirtieth and/or Union.
And/or.
That'd be great, cause it's, yeah, it's not the cross section.
That's fine. Any other. I don't remember exactly what I said. It's changed. I'll second whatever.
Okay, all in favor. Say aye.
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 Follows, motion carries.
So, do I have this motion correct? Do I have to allow the department head to proceed with obtaining permits on the thirtieth and Union?
And/or, he would like it to say, because it, that one location is on thirtieth and the other locations are on Union.
Two are on Union, one is on thirtieth.
And/or.
Okay, what else you got, Michael?
Give you a quick update on the mobile three-one-one that we discussed. Getting started this week, hopefully, on doing the setup. The prices all have stood, except for the price through Next Tech, where we're gonna have expense for a case to protect the tablets. And they were twenty-four ninety-nine apiece and they're getting us a twenty-five percent discount. So, I think it was roughly two hundred and eighty additional dollars, let me get that here, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and fourteen cents roughly for cases. So, but other than that, things are progressing pretty good. Moving some gravel today up in the Barnard area, southwest of Barnard. They didn't get near as much rain up there as we did the rest of the county for the most part, so they're able to move up in that, neck of the woods. Bridge crews heading over to the western part of the county to try get the Lawson Bridge on the Saline River, open back up, get it excavated and backfilled, and get that opened, and then hopefully they'll get over and get that pipe done cautiously. Having some moisture problems there, but as soon as we can get.
Did you say they are working on the Lawson Bridge or they're going to?
They should, heading up there today.
Oh, okay.
It might have been a little bit wet this morning, but I'm sure that they're able to get in there after some time. But other than that, that's all I have this week.
Did we address the issue that came in by written request for two? I wanna say two twentieth and Oak Drive. That's what I've written up.
Mr. Kaffers. Kaffers. I don't know where Bob will come up with that. He's not here today. I haven't discussed it. We went out after the meeting last week and looked at the location and.
Bob will be the one.
We did that covert work. We removed some trees and visited with the tenant there and everything was fine. Not a land of dissatisfied. It does need some gravel in a few spots.
About the blades?
One came in. They're installing some additional stuff that were DLO installings. They weren't factory installs, so. Hopefully, the other one comes in fairly quick. If not, I'm gonna have them go ahead and deliver the one. I was gonna have to do it both at the same time, but. They're one serial number apart from each other, so they should've came off the line within a day of each other, if not the same day. I don't know what the hang-up is on getting delivery of it, so.
Anything else for Michael?
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been scarred just in case you.
Come on in. Come on, Gordon.
Where you want me at?
Just anywhere you want to sit.
I don't wanna sit in the middle.
Okay, you can sit on the end.
They haven't seen any of it, so I'm gonna pass that out.
Glad you're gone.
Well, and maybe you wanted to change something up too. So, the first page is the information from the insurance company. However, he has sent back out that he won't pass that outright until they're actually repairs are done. They'll pay a certain, a certain portion of it. And then the backside is George's bid, and then there's the Eaton bid on the nursing home.
There's two options on the sheriff's department. There is a metal medical management report.
Is he gonna be the number one, or?
Yes. No, I had to alert the girls up there. You guys ran B E N E last month there.
Don, on this page from the, uh, the insurance company, it says recap by room. That has the separate, oh, she called?
Thanks, you're welcome. Find that.
Talking vanilla. Do you have one that we got last week? Do you have the, do you have that, um, company that we got one from last week?
Right here.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
All spread it in. That's for the metal.
Understanding that we didn't receive any other separate bids from Eaton, just LPM.
Eaton's going to make a mark here.
What do they call them, the scale house?
What's that?
The scale house? What's that?
Um, the transfer section.
Or the landfill.
Is that what that is?
Yeah.
It's listed under scale house by the insurance company. Don, I wanted to ask you, the recap by room page that the insurance company gave that itemizes each, is that what they're saying to payout?
On the net claim. Yeah, it's on the net claim, but that's your total that you're going to receive is on the net claim. But according to what Jess has given on the sheriff's department, on my estimate, I included gutter and downspout, which he did not have, also the tower removal on the top because we're going to have to jack with that a little bit to get whatever we put on there. Manipulation, I guess what they'll call that, of that tower. So there is extra funds on the sheriff's department just because he did really crawl up there. But I've already discussed that with him, there's extra money there to get everything completed. Yes. All malarkey. Yeah, here's, I guess you got that fire on it, but that's what we projected we put on would be the malarkey legacies. They're going to run you 20 to 30% discount on your insurance on those buildings, and they should. So it's, the price is right. Right now, we got a pretty good deal with our supplier. Price went up Friday, but it's not bad. That one went up for five bucks a square, but we're still $10 or $12 under what we had on those.
Who contacted you to do the bids?
Uh, Greg Babcock had mentioned that one up there and then I was like, I wanted to find out what else was available, so basically I kind of did my own research and found out who was, what all was doing, what and where.
Right, have we advertised for any bids on this?
Most generally when there's a hailstone, contractors come in and hunk you out.
You say with the price of the class four shingle, I'm very confident in it. I mean, that's about as good as you're going to get with the class four shingle.
I'm only asking, we're required to take bids and we don't have any. We only have one alternative on one building out of the, however many are on there. So we, I mean, we have to do that by statute.
Right.
How would you like to proceed with that as far as the commission is concerned?
Right, contact Eaton, yes, and ask them to bid the others. Right, give a comparison. I don't remember what they were.
It's right, it's right here.
Is that comparable on the Tamco's or is that on the malarkeys, the class fours?
Tamco.
Heritage.
No, I didn't. Or I do, but it's not taking. Okay, yeah, we got this on my suite.
Are you leaning more towards the metal on the sheriff's department over the shingles?
What's that?
Are you leaning more towards the metal on the sheriff's department over the shingles? Or?
I don't.
Or just try to do what insurance is allowing.
I don't think we necessarily have a budget for the increase.
That's what I was saying, for the metal.
To answer your question, to the best of my knowledge, that's, yeah, the difference in price hasn't necessarily been budgeted. I'm not suggesting to make that a decision, just from what I know.
Pretty tough right now. More ways than one.
When you formulated the bids, is that based on your own evaluation?
That is based on what I saw on the job site.
Okay.
Insurance doesn't pay, like on the Park Manor, they did pay for new vents, pipe boots, but we put those on no matter what. It's all flashing, everything's involved there on those. All buildings that we looked at. It'll be a complete new road, whereas he's just, normally they itemize these things out, like the courthouse storage, you see how they remove and replace gutter, the exhaust cap, all that stuff, then you go to sheriff's office. It's remove so many shingles, put so many shingles on. I mean, it's.
Do we not have, I mean, have you worked with?
Yeah, I've worked with Jess, yeah. It's just one of those things on a big deal like this where you're looking at multiple properties. He just, he actually called and asked if he was okay with this pricing and I said, yeah, that's good enough to cover for the, all your vent covers. So there was no reason to spend extra time. My God, he's swamped. All the adjusters are snowballed this year. I'm actually, the reason he had to go back and redo the nursing home or the retirement center because he was way high on the shingles. I said, there's not that many there. I said, I've measured it three times and I'm still coming up with this amount, so.
I think he actually had the sheriff's department in with it because that dollar amount itself didn't really actually change.
Well, he hadn't even, well, he hadn't even looked at it, the sheriff's department. He hadn't looked at that, so I don't look.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Do we? Do we have to solicit? We have two bids now.
Not for the nursing home. And you really don't have to for the other ones because of the dollar value.
It's not a cumulative total?
Because we're only going to pay $500, that's what our insurance budget is. It's $500 insurance for every.
On your summary for building? This is a replacement cost values of $97.762. You take your 500 off of it and that's what you're going to be paid is at $97.26208. That's the total payment plus our supplement for gutters and manipulation on the roof up here. I tried to call Jess this morning on the way over, couldn't get an answer. I was going to discuss with him what the amount was going to be on the gutters and stuff, but it's going to be real close to what we've projected on our estimate for the sheriff's department. There's a lot of gutter on that building, whether it be in two stories at six inches, should have more than enough to cover everything that's going to be done on the project.
Well, I would prefer to use same contractor on all projects.
Well, I would think so, it'd be easy. I guess the question is, do we want to go to metal or stay with asphalt on the sheriff's office? One of the questions we need answered.
You said about using the same contractor, but we don't have a bid for a contractor to do all of them.
Yeah, we have to draw a family bid along.
Yeah.
No, but their bid's going to be the same straight across the board on shingles, with large squares and dollar amounts.
I understand what you're saying.
I understand what you're saying, too, but you gotta go by protocol.
Number one, yeah, I'm going to prefer to use local, however, I think professionally it's a good idea to solicit and to be open.
No, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I mean, we have people hearing that you got a phone call and you came out and bid everything and no one else snooped about it. It's a little shaky on this end. I don't feel comfortable in my position.
I'm sure, I always thought about the long, you better have thought that they would have gone and measured the other ones if they were interested.
Greg Babcock called about the coverage on the Lincoln Park Manor. They would have no, they would have no knowledge.
Drive around town, you'll see their name on people's cars all the time. They get a list from the insurance companies of the houses that are damaged, correct?
Yeah.
Insurance companies give them a list.
They got this same sheet. Or they should, if they did what they're supposed to do. I mean, you'd be crazy to not go do it.
Yeah, I mean, I would consider it the commission's responsibility to handle that, not just leave it up to each individual company, well, too bad you didn't see the chance or opportunity. I mean, it's a little disconcerting. I mean, you already came in under bid for comparative shingles, so I'm not saying that, I'm suggesting we can find someone to pay cheaper.
With it's an upgrade too, though. I'm giving the upgrade to the motor shingle at that price also.
Right, there's about a thousand dollar difference between your bid and theirs for that malarkey shingle. I just think professionally, we should have a little more of a consideration.
Your gutter, you have to.
The gutter that's on the existing, any damaged gutter will be replaced.
I guess if we want a comparison, we can have them go measure the others up there. I don't care either.
I don't care either.
I cannot believe they'll come in under what they, under him.
I'm not suggesting that we're seeking a cheap, cheap alternative. I'm suggesting that we be professional as a board and say, we're going to open the bidding process, we're going to close the bidding process, and we're going to select a contractor instead of making it appear as if, like you just reiterated, you don't care. I do care, so that's the difference. I care about that process. I care about making and creating a standard for this county that we have accountability to the taxpayers and their dollars and the way that they're spent rather than selecting and choosing based on who we decide to phone call or not. I mean, I'm not sure why that seems to be the protocol, but.
Does the county have a cost other than the?
$500 if I have to fill a surplus.
The rest of the cost is the insurance company.
And again, as I will reiterate, it's not about finding a cheaper alternative as it is about being professional and having multiple options and saying legitimately, we looked at the options and this is what we chose, instead of closing the door and saying, we made a phone call and this is what we chose. It has an appearance, whether you realize it or not, to the public as to how we do things, and I would suggest that that should be even considered a resolution or a policy of the board as much as anything else for anything that we do.
With my estimate, there is no county that's running out of water. I mean, that's where it's at, so. Do you feel better about getting other estimates? Fine, that's no problem.
Well, we could say, yeah, go ahead, advertise your bids and go through that whole process and delay it a couple of months.
A couple of weeks it would probably take. I don't, I doubt that it'd be months, but we are in the beginning of July. I mean, as far as I can tell, none of this damage has created severe roof leaks or any kind of emergency disaster situation. I would think that that would be prudent and professional. And I'm not even saying that if your bid happened to be slightly larger than one that we get, that it's not going to be considered. I'm just saying across the board, we can't keep making decisions based on the first person we give a phone call to. It has a terrible resonating effect in the public.
How long are your prices going to hold for?
They're weekly.
They're weekly?
I mean, I ordered the shingles on, or two truckloads of shingles based on the fact that price went up Friday. So as of right now, I can't guarantee because with the storms that have happened in Dallas, Denver, Oklahoma City, they just keep, you know how that is. They have supply and demand, they're going to keep raising our prices, but right now. We just had, like I said, we had our increase on the class fours on Friday. Hopefully they don't happen again into this next one. That's somehow out of our control.
I think every contractor's probably in the same situation, so it's pretty much across the board, yeah.
Right, that happens everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, we really don't have to flip that bill because we only spend our deductible, right? So again, to reverse that conversation, I think we should just do the process formally, solicit the bids, and I appreciate you coming to answer the questions. I guess I don't have anything to compare it to, is my only hesitation, so.
Yeah, the one that you've done.
Yes, on the nursing home, yes. And it was, I mean, Greg did his job of soliciting multiple bids, which was great.
We normally, when there's damage, we out, but contractors, we don't contract.
Yeah. Oh, and I agree with you. I think if we're going to do it, we can hire a contractor to do them all. I mean, they're going to be in the area, they're going to have the same insurance billing and everything, so it makes sense, but we don't have anything other than the Lincoln Park Manor assessment. The two that you gave for Lincoln Park Manor, what was the difference in those?
Tamco is a 30-year shingle.
Okay.
And then the malarkeys is a class four. Which that's basically what the insurance is paying for, is a tamco shingle. That's where you're putting pricing right now, we're able to go on up to the class four.
I think we're going to do it up there.
I hope, it'd be crazy not to. If we're, if you're within the insurance.
Well, you want to put an ad in the Lincoln paper or do you want to advertise it?
Sure.
Sure. What are you on for deadline?
Well, um, two weeks should be plenty, I would think. Do we have the ability to do that on the website, Dawn?
Can we get an ad in this week's paper or not?
No. Oh, yeah, tomorrow.
So concerning Park Manor, that's going to be advertised again also then, or is it just going to be these other buildings for, say, he did an opportunity to come back through?
I mean, I guess that depends on if they're standing at saying it's a package deal. That's what their suggestion, I'm not opposed to that. Because I'm not opposed to it being a package deal. I mean, it makes sense for one person to be able to do the billing and not have to divide it up. It does not have to be a package deal, the insurance company just sends it.
I'd move with contract you a construction to do the nursing home and shingle for his, with his heritage, with the heritage or?
Malarkey.
Malarkey shingles for, I don't know what it was. $57,150. I would also add to that that we have solicit bids to do the rest of the county buildings with a two-week deadline.
I move for division of the question. Move to divide if it needs to be moved.
I'll do the yule and then we'll do the other. I'll second the motion on the nursing home, our yule construction. We have a comparative bid.
Yeah, I'll withdraw the other part, yule. Okay. We are, motion to, yule to do the nursing home. Questions?
I move to divide the question. When you move to divide the question, it means you have two motions wrapped up in one motion. So move to divide the question means make it two separate motions.
I withdrew the other part and withdrew the other.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you say that. I'm, I apologize. I did not hear that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Whenever you can do it, good. We will, uh, if you need to adjust your bids, two weeks.
As of right now, my pricing, we're, we're good yet.
Uh, Dawn, you want to put that in the paper? I suppose it'd be the easiest, didn't it? Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Cory. Deborah?
Wait a minute, you didn't do the second motion, not, I'm sorry, not you. You didn't do the second motion. If you withdrew your additional motion to the first motion and ignored.
We just decided to advertise for it, like we said.
I think we need a motion to advertise the bid.
We need a motion to advertise, we can have a motion. Otherwise, we're going to advertise the rest of the buildings. Deborah, you ready?
Okay, so then Dawn, you'd have a, you'd have a die for lack of a second there on the motion to divide. You'd still have the withdrawal, but you'd still have the motion to divide the question with the, with the die for lack of a second.
Yep. I was able to put a little something together, um, about the health insurance. It's a lot of numbers. Um, on the top, you'll see, um, that's what the state sends us, where they break out what the health plan is going to cost for the next fiscal year. Um, you'll see that, um, there are two columns that list the employer portion. And that's because the state's fiscal year one's different than ours, so they set the employer rates, employer for July through June and employee through January through December. So the employer rates change mid-year. What I did down below was, um, based on the 10% that we discussed, broke out the four different tiers in each of the different plans that the state will have next year. The plans that they have are in blue down here on the third page. Um, it kind of breaks out what each plan will cover. So I kind of followed the 10% rule, except on the single plan. Um, I just set the single rate as what the state says that the single rate should be. And we should probably discharge the single employees what the state says they should pay and be done with it. It's the cleanest, it's the easiest, um, it's within the percentage.
Wait a minute, I thought we were mandating to pay the 95%.
We are. And what we charge the employees with a single rate now, depending on what plan they take, it's, it is less than the 5%.
It's less than, than the percentage. This is a 5% then?
This is just what the state says the employee should pay. And I just think that you should discharge the single people what the state says they should pay. Be done with it. I think it's easier. Um, and then they can base what plan they want, based on what the state says that their rate should be. And it kind of makes it a little bit easier. I included in there that if employees participate in the state's wellness program, they save that $40 per month. And more of the employees are just going to want to do that, to save themselves some money and put some of that responsibility back on to them. Um, the spouse, child, and family plans, that is 10% of the premium. I took the, the fact that the rate for the county changes midway through the year and I combined them and killed with the 10%. Does that make sense? And then I did the same thing going down the line for all four plans. So basically, the employees' share would be different based on which plan that they chose to participate in, which will put a little bit more of incentive on them to take a look at the plans, see what's available and manage their healthcare maybe a little bit better. There are the two that are in red. Those don't follow the 10% formula that we were, we were looking at because 10% will be more than what the state says that they can pay. Does that make sense?
I guess I can, oh, wait, 72. Still, that doesn't make sense with the 5% on the.
It's never going. They have a, the, the way that they figure it because of the fact that they set the employee rates January to December and the employer rates from July to June. If you take the number and take it times 5%, you're never going to get 5%. It's their way of calculating it. I cannot.
Yeah, because I'm just, the, what's the E, E mean?
Employee. Employee rate.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, if they're saying it's $92 for Plan A. And the Plan A is.
You're never going to get to 5%. Why, I don't know. I've never been able to. If, that's just the way that their rates are. And sometimes it's just easier to just stop trying to do the math and just accept the number that they give. It's the, it's the way in which they calculate the health, the dental, and the way in which they break out the employer share throughout the year that makes it difficult to match the 5%.
So did you take out any dental like we talked about or anything like that?
What I did, what I did to start with, because it's a lot of numbers to look at, was based on the total, charging them 10%, and then leave it to the employee. If they choose that they don't want dental, then they don't want dental, they save nobody.
You deduct that, that exact dollar amount from their pay.
They'll save us more and they'll save, save them more. They don't, they want the dental, they'll pay for it. They don't want to do the wellness program, they're going to pay for it.
But if they want the dental, are we paying that 95% on the employee, on the single employee?
If, if, if they, if they decline the dental, they save themselves and the county money. And I know that there's a few employees that told me they have dentures, so why do I have the dental? But there's never been an incentive for them to drop the dental.
But if you have the individual plan and you want the dental, are we paying that 95% of the, of that additional add-on?
It's included. But our, our percentage of what we pay is included in that. And if they choose to not take the dental, there is a savings for them and for us. I don't know what percentage that it comes out to, but it would save us on the single plan. Any single employee who doesn't take dental will save us $44.18 a month.
So we are paying 95% of the dental if they choose to have the dental. We pay 95% of, I mean, I, the, that percentage thing still is interesting, but what you're saying is if they choose the plan, the health plan only, we're paying 95%. X is their, X is their cost. If they choose the health plan with the additional dental plan.
This $92.16 includes health, dental, and prescription.
That's everything that's included in these rates.
Yep, that is, that, that is, that is the highest one. That's health, dental, prescription. And then it's up to the employee at that point to decide what they want and what they don't want. Um, and I just went down each tier and I went down each plan and each plan's cost and came up with what the 10% was.
Um, including every?
Including everything.
And you're just saying they don't have the option to withdraw dental and I, or?
Um, the I care is already optional and the dental can be optional. It can be as well. It's, it's a, the I plan, we pay nothing towards the I one, nothing. But if they take dental, we pay part of it. Okay, so then what I did on the second page was took the total number of employees that we have enrolled and that I assume will be enrolled next year and calculated out what the total cost to the county, to the employees. The to, there's a total premium, what we would pay, what the employee would pay and how much we can budget, the maximum amount that we can budget. Based on the maximum amount that we can budget, less the county's share, um, we would, we would be close. We would have $46,740 to spare.
Including the two new positions?
Including the two new positions, as long as the three employees that are not enrolled in the health plan continue to decline. If they sign up for the plan or they leave and we employ somebody that does, we'll have to incur that cost. And we'll have to hope that all three of them don't take the family plan. But if employees choose to drop from Plan A to any other plan, there would be a savings to the county. So my hope is that between employees choosing a different plan option, we'll see a savings. Those that I know that probably don't want the dental, that might offer us some, some, some savings if those three positions happen to be filled.
What's bus reimbursement?
Uh, the transportation bus, their fund reimburses us for their employees' health plan.
Oh.
He's an employee, he's a county employee, but he's not a county employee and their budget is outside of ours. So when, um, he went on the plan, the state offers him a reimbursement.
He can still be on our plan even though he's not a county employee?
He is a county employee, um, but he's.
But his funding is separate.
Judge Cuddy was calling in at 10:00.
Go ahead.
And she has a limited schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. I said the one she called it, I would stop. And then, then we'll, yeah, we'll finish up after Judge Cuddy.
Do we need to go upstairs?
Hi, Joe, this is Dawn, and I'm just trying to call us. Would you be able? Okay, thank you. Hi, Judge Cuddy, this is Dawn, and I have the commissioners coming in with the chairman's speaker.
Morning, Judge.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Hello.
Thank you for getting me in. I understand that, um, you have a lot going on this morning. Do you need me to do this at another time?
No, this is fine. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to talk to you about the air conditioning in the courtroom. It was very hot up there on Friday. I didn't know that the AC hadn't been working there, but they told me that it's been four or five weeks. And although, I don't know the individual, same-year maintenance guy, brought in his own personal stand-up unit. I don't think he should go without AC at home and I don't know how long he's supposed to provide it. But is there a reason we can't replace the window air conditioner?
Judge Cuddy, this is Terry. Uh, I spoke with John Paul Saturday. That was the first I knew that the air conditioner wasn't working. He had contacted me about another deal and apparently the part is backordered. The air conditioner isn't very old and they've been up here and they've worked on it, but they, they replaced one part, but they found another part that was malfunctioning and, uh, as of, I believe he told me Thursday, it hadn't got here yet. Uh, he was going to contact them today and see if the part was here yet. And if it's not, then I will probably have to go a different route. But, uh, they have been here twice at least to work on it, but the part is backordered, so.
Okay.
I wasn't aware until he told me Saturday that there was a problem up there. I don't know if anybody else was aware of it or not.
Okay.
But we'll, we will resolve the issue.
Thank you. I appreciate that much.
We haven't had a chance to talk about it. I didn't bring it up because I saw you were on the, uh, agenda, so.
If they're not going to be able to get the part, because I understood that was some company out of Salina.
Suburban, I believe. I believe it's Suburban and they're, I'm not.
You have a local place that sells window air conditioners? If we happen to go that round?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we do, yeah.
Okay.
And that, you know, that may, we may have to put one in and, and then let them continue to find the part for that one, I guess. And then we'll just have a spare around here or something, but, uh, I, I apologize. I wasn't aware of it.
No, I know what's about whiny. It's just that we're not all dressed to be working outside in the heat.
Yeah.
It's very hot in there.
I think, I think he, you know, John Paul's been working on the program, problem, but, uh, getting the, the repair people to get it done has been the problem, so. Or get the right, get the correct parts, I guess, but that's what.
So as long as you know about it and you're working on it, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to get some kind of solution to it today before we leave.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I assume we will. That'd be my intention anyhow, so.
Okay. Thank you again for working me in.
You're back. Thanks, Judge.
You're back.
Okay, so the second page, like I said, that's where I calculated what, based on the current enrollment, the two new positions that we're going to add, where we, where we would be. Um, and then, like I said, the bus does reimburse us because he gets state funding and state reimbursement. So when they reimburse, he reimburses us.
So is that not included in our, in this far, far right column? I guess I'm, I'm looking at, could you explain that column to me? You have 2017, that's what we.
That's how much we budgeted in 2017.
Okay, so for 2017, we budgeted $925,000 for employee health insurance.
Yes.
That's the total that we spend.
No, that's what we budgeted.
Okay.
It's only June, so it's July.
What we're looking at, that's about what we're spending. So what is the 1.4%?
That is the, that is the.
Amount of increase that is available.
Based on the budget cap?
Yeah.
The lid?
The lid, ta, the tax lid. We could go up that 1.4%.
That lid is going to allow next year's increase to be 12,950.
Yes.
Over what we budgeted last year.
Yes. And it's my understanding that with emergency services, they are outside of that lid.
Okay, so you can take away.
Our, our positions that are, fall under emergency services, we can in, increase the budgeted amount by the total cost of the increase because we can increase. They're outside that cap. So I took all the employees that fall under that category times the increase to the, to the highest available plan and took it times 12 months and came up with how we can.
You're saying this emergency services line, 81,398, 28, 28, is that what we budgeted for 2017?
No, that is what is outside the cap. Emergency services is outside the cap, so every employee whose position falls under emergency services, we can increase our budget based on the increase of the health insurance. So we can increase additionally. So we can increase additionally for emergency services.
But what is this eighty-one thousand? Is that what we are currently spending for all the emergency service employees? That's eighty-one thousand that comes out of the nine-hundred-and-twenty-five?
No, that's the increase.
So that's just the increase?
That's just the increase for those positions, for the 2018 year.
But how are you calculating an increase if it's not under the tax lid? If it's not under the 1.4% increase, how are you calculating that increase?
The number of employees, times the increase, times twelve months.
Which increase? Times, the number of employees, times what increase?
Of the health plan.
Oh, with the, with the-
Seventeen versus eighteen. Yeah, seventeen versus, seventeen versus, I took the number of employees, times the increase, times the twelve months.
Well, you know the increase in cost, increasing cost, and what is actual cost?
What I did was the, the lowest plan last year, and the highest plan this year, and the difference. And it gives us that. And then if we're adding those two positions, those are emergency services, so we are allowed to increase for emergency services, so we can increase our budget by those two positions as well.
Okay, see what you're doing. You're giving us the total allotted increase.
I'm making the amount that we can budget as big as we can with staying in the lid for the positions.
And that doesn't take away any bus reimbursement that we're expecting?
What?
Oh, I see, it's split up by the two.
Yeah.
So you still have that leeway in there?
Because, because really, I could just, it's like not counting his position, because we get reimbursed for it. But he is in that, he is in that total-
He's in the total 2017 number, though.
And, and we get reimbursed, so I included that number in there.
So that's still flexible, under the estimated increase in cost of sixty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty percent?
There was a little bit of flexibility.
Well, potentially eighteen thousand, four-hundred of that is not there, in essence. Because you're calculating it in as a cost, but you're not calculating the reimbursement as a deep, as a negative.
Probably.
Potentially, yeah.
Um, there's not a lot, now, there's gonna be a lot of leeway, but there will be a little leeway. The hope is that, um, those employees that may find the other plan options more beneficial to their, their needs, would offer us some savings, so that if those three employees that are currently not enrolled happen to enroll, and enrolled at the highest level, we'd still be okay. That's the concern. But we come really close.
Well, that's a lot of leeway, because that's-
Not a lot of leeway. Well, that's two people's individual plans that are, but there's three, and that's still a risk that we're gonna have to take. I tried to make the numbers as easy to understand as possible. It gets overwhelming when you look at-
Is this bus reimbursement for one full-time, one part-time? Is that why it's so high?
No.
Why is it more than the full-time employee-only plan?
Because he's enrolled in a, in a dependent plan.
Okay.
It would be less if it was an employee-only plan.
They're reimbursing based on what he's enrolled in, not based on what the price is.
Right.
Gotcha, okay. So this is our projected increase totaling one million, six-four thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars, eighty-four cents for 2018. Projected availability increase to that number from the budgeted amount of the previous year, 2017, which was nine-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
We budgeted nine-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, what we're gonna spend. I haven't calculated the other half of it.
How often do we go over?
I don't know.
You've been in a long time?
I don't deal with the budget.
You don't?
We haven't gone over, we've had insurance.
I say, I don't think that we, we have.
Okay.
Oh, I don't, oh, you're saying we, we haven't gone over, okay.
She doesn't know if they have.
I don't deal with the budget, she does.
And you're saying we haven't gone over in our, that's good.
We usually hope that our estimate is lower than what we project, and that we stay under. Or that we have vacancies, or employees that don't enroll. And we've had vacancies this, this year, so any month that we have a vacancy, it saves us money.
And you don't know that the employees are gonna enroll in until October, when you're doing the budget in June, so you have to plan for worst-case scenario.
I kinda look at who's on a family plan, or whose kids are gonna be coming off, or who might be leaving, or who might be getting married, or whose situation might change, and I do the best that I can.
Oh, I understand that. You have six months of, wait, yeah. What, um, what happens to the additional funds left in the budgeted fund for health insurance at the end of the year?
It just rolls over and reduces the amount that you need to levy for the following year.
It rolls over into the same fund?
It's the same, it's, just becomes cash in January, so if you, if you budgeted and you levied, but you didn't spend, you have excess cash. The excess cash then just creates a bigger cash pool, which reduces the levy, the, the ad valorem that's required for the following year.
But you don't know that until January, basically?
This would be an increase to the employees. Um, for example, um, the highest family plan would be two-hundred-and-seven dollars and forty-one cents, and right now, which was a hundred and ten dollars. So we would be, in essence, asking everyone, everyone that it's on the family plan to pay a hundred dollars more a month. Because we charge, the family plan, we charge one-ten. The employee child and the spouse, we charge eighty, and then the single, we charge sixty. There's a lot of numbers, and I, I tried to make it so it wouldn't be overwhelming. And then the family is one-ten, and then the two middles are eighty. Sixty-eight, eighty, and one-ten. And the hope would be that the employees will look at their situation, their needs, and base which plan they want on their, those needs, and whether or not one of the other plan options works for them. There are five next year. I did include that, um, in the back for you to look at as well. Um, the A and the C are the ones we have now. These three are all new.
Are those plans available on the website, or how do we get the information on those plans?
They haven't given us a lot yet. They're going to have webinars later this month that, um, employees can go on and watch the webinars, and it'll just give them some basic information about each of the plans. They've given out very limited information, this so far. Um, and I, but I do know that the Q, the N, and the J, they did tell me it would have no copays. So like now, when an employee goes to the doctor, they pay forty dollars, and then they pay their coinsurance. It would, if they take any of these other three plans, it would just be coinsurance, not the copay. You know, the specialist is sixty dollars, so hopefully employees might find that to be a savings, based on what their needs are for their family.
When we do our annual cost-of-living raise, what, what is that typically?
It varies. Um, there's been years that we gave nothing. Very few, but there were years we gave nothing. Um, some years we gave, um, forty-five cents, sometimes fifty. Um, I believe there was quite a, quite a few years ago that they did go more than fifty cents, but I can't remember. I've been here a while. It all tends to blur, so. But it's typically around the fifty-cent mark, sometimes more or less.
When's the last time we didn't give one, do you know?
No, I'd have to look. I wouldn't wanna give you a date and be wrong.
About my calculations, just quickly, if you had a family plan and you were asked to spend that additional hundred dollars, it'd be sixty-two cents.
Normally, like our salary people, we say a quarter equals, um, forty-four dollars a month, fifty cents equals about eighty-eight dollars a month. So yeah, you would be looking at, fifty cents wouldn't quite. Now, you do have to remember, and take into consideration, um, that this is a pre-tax amount. So that does help to, to decrease their tax liability, um, so that does kinda help a little bit as well. It's, it's, it's difficult, because I know that I'm over here on this single plan, so for me to ask a family person to incur a hundred-dollar-a-month increase, it's, you know, it's, it's difficult. Because I'm not gonna be the one that has to pay that, they are. I could try to do something, a different amount. Um, I don't know if this... Maybe it's something you guys wanna maybe take home and take a look at, and maybe talk about more-
Yeah, they could study it a little bit.
More next week. They are gonna be offering, they are supposed to be giving the dates out soon, and when they are available, I'll encourage employees to watch them. I haven't seen them myself, so. Some of the, the, you know, just looking at what they did provide, there are some differences in the plans that might be appealing to some of the employees.
Will they send out an email when their webinar's gonna be?
They will. They'll send it to the, to the employees whose emails they have, and then they'll send it to me, so I can forward it to the department heads to encourage the employees to watch.
What is the percentage increase that they are imposing on us?
I don't remember what it was. I'd have to look.
Is it more than the 1.4%?
Oh, yes. I'm gonna say it's between six and eight, but I don't remember what the figure was off the top of my head, so I don't wanna give you the wrong number.
So for, so just roughly, if it's between six and eight, and we are currently paying ninety-five percent of everybody's, approximately, correct?
Give or take. I don't wanna say that's a hundred percent accurate, because I haven't done the math to figure the actual percentages, but give or take.
So increasing the employee share to ten percent would be shy of covering the actual cost increase of the plan? At sixty-eight percent?
I have to do math, and I could. It's difficult, because we're gonna have to pass the cost on to the employees, and I know that you'd like to give a cost-of-living increase, but we're also within that 1.4% cap on that too. So, you know, finding that balance is gonna be difficult. My hope would be that, um, our employees will understand that it's time for them to pay a little bit more, and know that we'll do what we can wage-wise to help to compensate for that. Yet still be able to offer something that will attract and keep quality health.
Under this plan, since we're bound to pay a percentage that they deem the employer pays, does that also apply to the vision in dental, or are we allowed to charge one-hundred percent to the employee for those additional?
The employees pay one-hundred percent for the vision. The vision is completely separate, optional plan. They don't want it-
Always has been.
Always has been, always, always, always.
But are we permitted to do that for the dental?
Dental, we have to pay our, our share, but we can also-
The ninety-five for an individual, the fifty-five or sixty-five, whatever it was for the family?
Um, where the, it shows you right here, the dental that the employee would have to pay in that column there. That's the employee's dental.
But where's our?
Ours is, is, um, I, like I said, the single is, our share is forty-four eighteen.
In addition to this?
No, it's, it's built into this number here, this number here. The employer's share in, includes our share of the health, the prescription, and the dental.
But what I'm asking you, that portion, that forty-four that we pay on the dental, when the employee pays twelve dollars and we pay forty-four, are we allowed to separate that and have-
No more than the twelve dollars and sixty cents. We can't charge them more than twelve sixty for their dental. And the dependent plans, it's no more than that amount there. And that is included in that ten percent. I don't know that there's many employees that wouldn't want dental, but would probably drop the dental. And that's their choice. And it would save them and save us. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, this is a great spreadsheet. I mean, it shows the-
I tried not to give too much, but I don't, where there's five plans, it's a lot of numbers.
Five plans, but we still don't know what the other three plans are?
Well, we do, they're there.
No, I mean what?
The details.
The de- the-
The, the, the basic details are here. It gives them their-
The cost, but not the coverage.
Yes, we do, they're there. They're there. Plan Q, they're, they're-
Same as Plan C, same, is that what you mean by that?
No, they're, it shows right there, that their deductible is five hundred for the single, for, just using Plan Q as their first one on the list, and a thousand for dependent coverage, where this year, it's two and three thousand dollars. A thousand, two thousand, three thousand. Um, their coinsurance this year, and the Plan A is twenty percent, Plan Q it's fifty, Plan, Plan N it's thirty-five, Plan J it's twenty-five.
So in these reduced deductible amounts, basically, the employee needs to be explained that though their premium may increase monthly, there, these options for lower deductibles didn't exist prior.
These, the last few years, they just had these two plans to choose from.
Well, that's a justification in and of itself, right there.
A person has to look at their, their need. I've had a couple employees tell me they can't leave the plan that they're on because of prescription drug coverage. Because the better prescription drug coverage is the Plan A. The Plan, Plan Q, N, and J are the same as C, and it is reduced coverage for prescription drugs, and there are employees that could not afford that.
So that's the main inhibitor, the prescription?
One of the main inhibitors is that, and the other main inhibitor is the deductible. Our family employees have to pay three thousand dollars. If they don't hit that three thousand dollars every year, they may find that a plan with a thousand-dollar deductible benefits them more. They're gonna have to look how often they go to the doctor, what they're spending, what they're utilizing, and what works best for their family. I'm on the Plan C, and I don't mind it. So far. But that doesn't mean that Plan C would benefit everyone. It's gonna make them take more ownership in their healthcare.
So this is a convoluted question, however, okay. We are not allowed to offer any financial incentive for them to opt out.
Yeah.
Is there a financial incentive between plans?
The difference in the premium to the employee, that's what this is here.
But it also changes the premium price for us.
Yes.
Do we have any power over financial incentive for that?
We, that's where you said the ten percent.
Right, but what if we made it fifteen percent for the one certain plan because of its cost to us? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Are we allowed to differentiate between?
As long as, as, as long as we say we don't charge them more than the state allows, we can. But we also have to balance that between what we're paying them for a wage, so as to not to lose quality employees, because they feel like they can't get adequate healthcare coverage.
No, but I'm just saying, let's say Plan A, if you're saying the primary inhibitor there is that it's the best prescription coverage, and unfortunately, people that want that over and above their low deductible are gonna choose that regardless. Are we able to differentiate the amount of the premium that we're paying for that particular plan? Just because it is the most expensive option for us to pay into?
Well, we would be, because we would charge them two-hundred-and-seven dollars, where if they took any of these other plans, there'd be a considerable savings.
But that's only us paying, uh, that's only them paying the ten percent. What if we upped it to fifteen percent for that particular plan, is what I'm asking?
That's up to you. You told me ten percent.
Yeah, you're doing ten percent across the board. I'm asking you if we have the option to change that percentage by plan, not-
As long as we don't charge them more than the, than what the state requires, yes, we can charge them more. We just want to balance that between what it, whether or not that's gonna cost us, how that's gonna affect the employees. Whether or not they can afford that, or whether they, they would feel that that was something that they couldn't remain here, and they'd have to look someplace else. Whether or not that would prevent us from able to find and keep quality health. There has to be a balance, and we have to figure out where that balance is. I don't think this is a bad, I think the ten percent, I hope that they would agree that this isn't a bad start for an increase. And it still gives us some wiggle room, and, or some room to be able to manage what we can budget and what we can afford. I think this isn't a bad start.
Do you have the breakdown of numbers that we have enrolled in each plan?
That's how I calculated these numbers. They're right here. Number enrolled. I have, we have currently twenty-four.
But I'm talking about A versus J, not family.
There's only three people on Plan C.
We don't have a J.
There is no, there are only two plans available this year.
I see, okay, yeah, the other three that they're, okay. But out of the two options, now there are only three on Plan C.
Because the Plan C is a high-deductible health plan, what the hell savings account?
Gotcha, gotcha.
And the employees did not find that.
Gosh, so you really have no idea that they're gonna choose between the other, between the five options, what the other three will do?
I think that once the employees start looking at the plans, we'll start to get a feel. But we can, this number, the county share, is, is within this, so we, we can afford the ten percent. And our share would be less, even less, anyone that goes to a lesser plan, or a different plan.
Right.
So we have an even larger savings. And I think that, I think that to ask them to pay a hundred dollars more for what they're on now is a substantial increase to them. And I hope that they'll understand that, but to ask them for even more, I just, I don't know.
Is there any way we can do a questionnaire and mail it out with paycheck stubs, and say, you know, these are the proposed changes? What, what is your input?
We could do something like that. Um, if we were going to do something, um, we've already sent out paycheck stubs, and we won't be sending them out one other month. So it would probably be more something that maybe when I know when the webinars are, I can... And what we usually do is have a, one large open enrollment meeting. There's been a couple years that nothing really changed on the plan, so I went to each individual department to do their open enrollment. I could do something like that. Give them some projected information like this, some information about the plan, encourage them to watch the webinars, and then ask them to fill out a questionnaire after they watch the webinar as to what they thought, and what they think, and what they-
I think it'd be good to get some feedback.
But in terms of putting, I wouldn't wanna send something out in their check, because most of them aren't gonna know what I'm talking about. I think that they need information, and they would have questions, that they would want a little bit more than just a piece of paper to fill out. But we could do something like that.
Yeah, I think a lot of them are gonna wanna consult with their spouses or whatever, too.
I'll be honest, you know, when, the time that we did do that big meeting, um, when we switched to the state plan, we did a meeting in the evening, um, here at the- here at the courthouse, and a large, large number of the employees brought their spouses. So that them and their spouse could hear the changes and the options and what was available. Because, oh, no offense, for a lot of our men, their wives are the ones who take care of a lot of that. A lot of times when I have new employees that are enrolling, their spouses will call and ask questions, and I tell them to please do so, and I help them get enrolled and help them understand what the plan covers and how it works. But next year, each, for next year, the employee will have to physically sign up and go and pick their plan. It won't be like it's been in the past. Um, if you don't enroll, don't do open enrollment, you just get what you, what you've always had, been on the same thing. Next year, they will default them to, I believe they said it was the, the Plan N. So every employee is going to have to participate in open enrollment. My, my thought would be that when they have the webinars available, I could go down and maybe visit with the Logan Bridge employees and the Health Department and so on and such forth. EMS has a monthly meeting. I could probably attend their monthly meeting and visit with the full-time staff altogether then, things like that. I don't think that these numbers are bad. I, I would hope that our employees would see that, too.
Well, you're only talking about a ten dollar increase for some of these individual plans or less.
The individual plans aren't.
Same.
Where, where we're going to see the majority is affected is the ones on the dependent plans. And, you know, um, I know our employees, so I know which ones have options elsewhere, and I know we have employees that their spouses don't have options elsewhere. And I find it hard for me to tell an employee, enroll yourself and go put your kids on Health Wave. I just, I can't. I feel that's passing the burden on to the state. But I think these numbers aren't bad, and I would hope that they would agree so too. And I would hope that it would encourage those that aren't participating in the wellness program to do so. Or they'll just pay a little bit more. And it's not a bad wellness program. It is a good program. It's, it's not that difficult to participate in.
Well, I think this gives us a lot to consider. My only additional information required would be to know what we could do as far as a breakdown if we decided that Plan A is the, is the biggest burden on the county. What could we do to increase that, to be the employee portion pays fifteen percent instead of ten percent or something like that? I mean, that may.
I can bring you back some numbers for fifteen percent, but I think that that's, I think that's an even, you're already asking them to pay a hundred percent increase, as you said.
Well, depending on what your, I mean, the biggest increase over a hundred percent is the employee spouse one that I see goes from eighty to one seventy. That's over a hundred percent increase right there. The rest of them are under a hundred percent increase, but yeah. I'm only saying that because let's say you want Plan A, you want your prescription coverage, you have a prescription that you're on that costs two thousand dollars a month, and you only want to pay your premium, which is eighty bucks a month right now on employee spouse plan. To, to increase your cost by a hundred and fifty percent and still get the coverage for the prescriptions is much more valuable to those people who remain on Plan A. Whereas with these three additional options and the deductibles going down, people might jump from that Plan A to one of those three new ones and still only pay ten percent of the total cost. But the, the penalty, in other words, for staying on Plan A, if you need that prescription coverage, which is potentially thousands of dollars of savings in a month if you're on a heavy medication, or expensive medication, excuse me, then, you know, that might just be a good solution for that plan because that seems to be the plan that.
It's been the only option that employees had.
Right.
So it isn't that they all took that plan because they wanted to rack it to the county. It was the, the only plan they had or a high deductible plan with a health savings account. And a lot of employees didn't want a high deductible health plan with a health savings account.
Right.
I just, I don't know. I think the ten percent was a good place. If you want me to come up with some fifteen percent numbers, I can, but I think that that would be too burdensome on a lot of the employees. I think the ten percent would be a good start, but that's just me.
Thank you, Deborah. Your work.
Do you want numbers for fifteen percent to look at next week? Do you want me to just come back next week and we'll take a look at this, or what do you want to do from here?
I mean, I guess you'd run some number of fifteen. I don't. That's pretty good. For Steve Andrews.
I can put some for fifteen because I, I, I would need something to present to the employees, so I would want you to take a look at this and maybe talk about it again next week. Is that okay?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, well, I'll get on the agenda and come back next week. Thank you.
Was Brett coming? Dawn?
Was I supposed to have you come?
Oh, I just see it says EMS Director, and I just wondered.
No, I asked if we could discuss that.
Oh, okay.
So, is that where we are on the agenda? I just had some questions. I did a little bit of follow-up on our conversation from last week, and, um, I thought maybe you guys could answer. Okay, um, I had moved last week that we solicit for a full-time position for EMS Director because we currently have one listed as an interim. And I believe it was you, Aljo Wallace, that said after an extensive, that was your word, an extensive search that you couldn't find anyone. So I was just wondering if you could explain how we searched or what that process was and, and how you guys came to that decision.
Well, I think Deborah just left, and she was in charge of getting, doing the advertising stuff. I know they advertised on the state website, uh, prior to hiring the director that was in there for a couple of months before Brett. And, uh, we interviewed three, three people. One didn't show up for the interview. And we advertised for several months.
We interviewed three and one didn't, and plus one didn't show up, I remember.
And the, uh, probably the prime candidate, we couldn't come anywhere close to his salary requirements.
I'm, I'm just a little confused. I, so you're talking about interviewing for the position where you hired someone out of three applicants. And that was for a full-time position? Okay, and so now we have a part-time position, and I was told that there was extensive search and we couldn't fill that position. That's why.
We talked about the search prior to, we searched the, the, the director that Brett took their place with, was only here for three months, maybe, something like that. So I don't think anything changed in the process of trying to find one in three months' time.
To the best of my knowledge, after contacting, um, our HR department, we did not advertise for that position post the hiring of the one that was there for three months.
We advertised extensively three months prior to, I believe it was three months. I can't remember exactly. So when we asked Brett to take it on the interim, no, we did not advertise it.
Okay, so again, my question is, um, why, why do we have a part-time position for a department head, and there was an appointment made without an advertisement for the hire of that position?
Say that again.
Basically, what you're telling me is you advertised, and you got three applicants, and you did your interviews, and you chose one, and that only lasted three months. So then you appointed a part-time person from within the department to take over that position.
Correct.
And now it's been over a year?
Yeah, it's been over a year.
Okay, so you diligently sought for a full-time position, you hired someone, and when that didn't work out, you did an internal appointment and made it a part-time position. And I think, Terry, last week you told me you hadn't budgeted for a full-time position, yet that happened after the, the budgeting process, so I'm not sure.
No, I said, well, what I said was that we took the full-time position, we hired another full-time A E M T because we couldn't cover the shifts that we had. We had been covering with part-time people, and the part-time people weren't available anymore. So we took the budgeted amount for the full-time director, and we hired another A E M T to work full-time.
Well, isn't a typical director able to put in the hours that would cover those shifts that you were, that you had lost?
No.
No. That was part of the problem.
So you're.
How many twenty-four hour shifts do you want to take with you?
Well, I don't know, I mean, what your, what your concept is of, of a director, but, um, I would say according to the position requirements, the director doesn't necessarily have to be on a twenty-four hour schedule.
Who's going to cover the other hours?
Well, what you're saying right now is you have one part-time person that's doing one twenty-four hour shift, correct?
Well, it depends on the week. Depends on whether somebody's on vacation or whether they're sick or.
So I guess I'm wondering what, what you're expecting of the department head as a part-time position.
Will you tell me what we gained by having him full-time? What would we gain?
Well, I was looking at the, the job essential functions here listed on the job description, and I would say that you gain a lot if the person is, is doing all these things. You know, for example, we had two different department heads come in this morning and speak on behalf of a department head who can't be here. So I think, number one, you're losing out on communication with your department. The other thing I saw in here, every month on the, on the accounts payable, we see that we pay for billing, uh, through our clerk's office. Am I right?
Yes, that's true.
Okay.
Office does the billing for them.
Okay, but on the ambulance service director job requirements, it says that they should be responsible for that.
We haven't had a director bill for.
The job description is a little dated.
It's Sabrina Henry.
Yeah.
And I remember when I sent those to you, I told you that a lot of those descriptions were old and had not been updated, and that is one. And, no, but not to interject.
You're human resources.
But I will tell you that most EMS services at this point are not doing their own billing. They contract with a company to do so. Or they employ someone to solely to do that. When you have staff members that work twice a week, it just doesn't, doesn't work. And most services are a twenty-four, a lot of services are a twenty-four hour service. And I never thought we would be there, but we are, and it's working.
With, uh, my wife's a code, and the schooling that she had to have to do the I C U ten. I don't.
It's a nightmare.
Think that, yeah, I don't think that you can find a director that's going to be able to do the billing.
And quite frankly.
We had a full-time director. How long was Wendy here? Eight years?
And she never did.
Never did a billing.
And when we hired the, the, the one after her, she said she was going to, and it never happened, and it was never going to happen. It is a nightmare. You have no idea how much work it is to do that.
They have absolutely no training in billing.
It is, it is a process.
Coding is unbelievable.
And quite frankly, I think it's becoming a little too much for our office to handle, and I would like to look at contracting that out to a code that does it professionally.
And not to stick up for Mr. Kingen, but I don't believe that he was asked to come today, um, to the meeting. And I don't think he's been asked, and I think that if he was, he'd come when you guys want to see him. You just would need to let him know.
This isn't about a personnel issue at all. This is about a position.
Well, I was, I was just saying because somebody had said that he, somebody had to come on his behalf. I don't know that you knew that they needed him to come.
Oh, there was, no, that there, they were redressing an issue that was brought up last week, and they came in with their own, um.
Okay.
They formulated their own policies to look at, which was fine, but they were doing it based on a situation that happened with another department.
Okay.
Which is fine, but, um, the, the topic wasn't necessarily on target because it was a different discussion from last week. But I guess, um, I'm, I'm just concerned because, well, I think it was two weeks ago, the board voted to contract for four years an appraiser's position, full-time, with full-time benefits and everything else, knowing that there are other counties out there much larger than us that don't do that. And so I'm not sure how we're evaluating the importance of a position. You know, in my mind, someone to be the ambulance service director full-time would have a lot more hands-on duty and a lot more requirements and a lot more safety, health, emergency-type responsibilities than, let's say, an appraiser. Where in Russell County, which is much larger than us, they don't even have a full-time appraiser. Yet we choose to preserve a full-time position for an appraiser in this county, but not preserve a full-time position for EMS director. And to me, there's a, there's a heavy imbalance there as far as what the priorities are. You know, you're contracting for four years a full-time position for a county of populace of three thousand, and that's not seen across the board in other counties with much larger populations and more properties, more things to appraise, in other words. Um, when you have an EMS director that's required to do all of these things, um, I'm not sure how you can do that on a part-time basis.
I think when you, uh, when you start talking about part-time appraisers and stuff, I think you need to go back to that county and find out how many employees they have in that department because someone is covering that position when they're not there. They probably have an extra, at least one, maybe two extra people working in that office to pick up the time that the other one's not there, so.
You have to comparatively analyze how many properties there are and what the population is for that particular.
Someone has to be in that office if the appraiser's not there. And when you calculate that person's salary and benefits and all that, I think then, then you get your comparison. For instance, if we had a part-time person, we would probably have to have another person in that office when they're not there. And you have to calculate out that person's wa, what that person's wages would be and their benefits to get a comparison whether or not you benefit from having a part or full-time position.
Exactly. I mean, you can see that right in front of us in the beautiful spreadsheet that was just presented as far as what the cost is for full-time and the, and to provide benefits as well. You take that benefits package away and you have another part-time personnel wages. So, I mean, there is.
Does our part-time, does our, can you, can you say whether our part-time EMS director takes health insurance from us?
That would be inappropriate to share.
Okay.
Um, but just looking at some of these duties, I just don't know how you can expect someone to perform that on a once-a-week basis. You know, some of these things include coordinate department activities with local agencies, check and maintain vehicle equipment and supplies in Lincoln and Sylvan Grove, um, assign all tasks, establish monthly work schedule, monitors quality of work of all department personnel, responsible for reviewing patient run sheets and performing quality assurance, yada, yada. I mean, there are also things in here about, um.
There are also some of those things that are delegated to the other employees. Now, we have full-time twenty-four hour employees, too. Deborah, do you have something on that?
I had a question. Who said that he only worked once a week?
He did, to me.
He's on the schedule to take one shift. He works more than one day per week. He schedules himself to work a twenty-four hour shift once a week with which to respond to calls and so on and such forth. And when he's not responding to calls, he works on those duties. And then he works other days during the week to do administrative duties.
So he's going on one ambulance crew shift per week?
He takes a twenty-four hour shift per week, and then he does, comes in on other days and does administrative duties.
Which is more than what our previous full-time director was doing.
As far as taking a shift?
Yes.
Well, when you're taking a shift, you can't, I mean, you may be out and not able to perform all these other duties. I guess, I'm wondering.
He balances his time. He said, um, that like if he has a call. He said that like if he has a call today, he may be able to do a little bit less in the office today, so then he'll go in another day and do other things. But when he's there in the office, he tries to utilize his time the best that he can. He doesn't feel that some of the meetings that prior Directors have felt more important are quite as needy. He feels that it's more important to be at local things than in Supica. That was something that, not a, not a criticism, our prior full-time Director, she attended a lot of state meetings and things like that, and he just feels that that's not the best use of his time.
So when is the last time that the EMS Director provided the Commission a list of short-term and long-term goals?
Never.
He's never been asked to. None of the Directors have been asked to.
It's right in the job description from the county.
But they haven't been asked to provide it. Like I said, those are very dated.
I wouldn't think that you can date something like providing short or long-term goals for a Department. I mean, that's not a dated activity. That's very present, clear, and needed. These are the things that when we're, I'm sorry?
The job description is dated.
That's what I mean, I'm sorry. We haven't updated that in a while. And if we were going to hire somebody, that would be one of the first things that I would want to do, is sit down and update that job description based on what they do do, what they do do...
Right, but your comment about the description being dated had to do with me saying that it requires them to provide short and long-term goals. If we've had someone hired for a year, and they haven't provided any short or long-term goals, and they're a part-time position, you know, maybe that's a reflection on...
He may have short and long-term goals, but someone would have to ask him for those goals, as they would have had to ask any of the Directors prior. I don't know that any of those ever provided the Board with goals.
I think in HR, in HR, it's a known fact that when you get a job description, that's the code by which you conduct yourself. You don't ask other people to demand things of you that are already in your job description. That's why you get this. That would be a con...
And as I told you, I won't hand that out to an applicant until that job description has been updated.
So you haven't handed this out yet. Last year, we had two Directors.
We... It wasn't last year, it was in 15. You hired in 15.
Well, it terminated, they terminated in January.
Yeah, this was in 2016. So in January 2016, you had a Director that was only three months in. So there's one new one, a year and a half ago. Then you had another new one employed as of January 2016. So you've had two within 18 months.
I didn't update, we haven't updated the job description in a while.
And I'm asking, why would that not be a consideration? You just said you would not give this to someone if they got employed, yet you've employed two people, and they haven't gotten a job description?
That was a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
And before I turned any job description out, when we, when we go to, what I usually do when we have a vacancy is I pull out the job description, and I sit down with the Department Head, and we start going through, and I'll say what...
But what you're saying is that wasn't done with this?
No, we didn't.
I would think that that would be important for a hire, whether you chose to hire out of applications, like you did in...
Is there a point to all this?
September, or whether you chose, yeah, the question again is how you're defining what the priorities are and what your expectations are for Departments, Department Heads, the requirements, the job descriptions. I mean, if none of these things are updated, and it's just a fluid concept, basically, anyone can get employed and do whatever they feel like. And if and when the Commission decides to lay down the law, then that may be, you know, a potential situation at hand. However, when I look through the index of the Lincoln County Resolutions clear back to 2011, I see barely anything related to creating policy on jobs, continuity between Departments, expectations, policies. I mean, there is nothing. For example, in 2014, I mean, I can cover with my hand the amount of policies that were made in this office, and they're all referring to transferring funds from one Department to another, doing burn bans, and doing things such as, you know, developing your cash management plan at the beginning of the year, which is, that's protocol at the beginning of every year. So I'm just wondering why these things haven't been addressed, and why you find it so offensive that I could possibly question why we'd have a part-time interim person filling a position that most people would deem as important in full-time? I mean, I've heard lectures and lectures from HR Department about how important our employees are, how important the benefits are, how we must treat them, yet we're going to skirt the opportunity to have someone in a position that's important and pick and choose other positions based on your emotional evaluation of what other counties do?
Let's move on. It's getting late. Well, the next thing on the agenda is distributing tax money to third-party solicitors. Dawn, is that?
That's Alexis.
Okay.
So I have a list here of the things that I had already mentioned, a few of them to you, as far as what we should put in a resolution. There, there are no resolutions from what I have found. And I didn't go back, you know, years and year, I went back half a decade or more. But I didn't find anything as far as what your requirements are. So what do you require from a third-party coming in to solicit funds based on their budget?
I guess I'm not clear on what it is you're...
What third parties are you talking about?
Any potential third party. An interdepartmental budget is budgeted at the beginning of our fiscal year when we, well, when we formulate the budget, I shouldn't say the beginning of the fiscal year. And when we formulate the budget, the budgets are set for Departments. I'm talking about third-party solicitors that...
Name them.
Name them?
Give you an example of what the hell you're talking about, because I don't have a clue.
Okay, so you really don't know any of the Departments that come and ask for money from you?
I know a lot of them. I just don't know which specific ones are referred to.
Third-party covers any and all entities that are soliciting money, so we have...
So the Plan Commission, Temporal Care and Mental Health, OCCK. What do you want us to require from you?
North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging, LCCA, OCCK.
If there's some information you want to know, it should be relevant.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about what are the, what are the stipulations that you have deemed necessary and appropriate in order to distribute Lincoln County funds to third-party solicitors?
I guess we look at, I look at the services they provide to the County, and I base it off of that.
Services provided. Okay, physically, monetarily?
Both.
And how do you assess those?
Past year's experience and seeing how it's changed, and what they've changed, and what they do, and what they don't do, and...
Okay. Do, do you have a requirement for them to come and report to the Board?
Most of them do.
But you don't have a requirement for them to do that?
I don't believe we do.
So if someone came in here from a third-party venture, they could solicit funds, get approved, leave, and never come back with a report?
They most generally come every year and give us a report on what they've done, and what the budget request is going to be, and...
But you don't require that?
No, I don't require that.
The Board doesn't require that.
Are there any of them that don't come in that you can think of, Dawn? Regional Planning Commission, maybe they usually don't.
Based on the law.
Yeah.
Could your Board, one of you, partner represented you with that Board?
Okay, so if we were to make a list of the things that we should be requiring as stewards of other people's money at this table, what should we tell those people whose money is being spent that these are the requirements in order for us to give your money to a third-party solicitor? These are the requirements.
I think the Council on Aging today brought in a paper force, detailed out how their money was being spent, what benefit it was to the County. We looked at it. That's one of them that has not always been funded to what they ask.
That was North Central Flint Hills Area Agency, that, that Area Agency on Aging. That wasn't the Council on Aging.
Council on Aging was here with Flint Hills, representing Flint Hills.
Yeah, the report came from Flint Hills. The report did.
I think the Council on Aging was in the previous level.
They came in with a budget request. They did come in with a budget request. I've seen several budget requests. In fact, I've asked it to be added to the minutes habitually that when we, when I had requested from these third-parties to bring back a recap and an analysis of what services were provided within our borders, that, that that be, you know, I would deem that as appropriate for us to require so that we can see what's actually happening. Terry, you said through experience that you've analyzed the physical and monetary services that are provided to us. I think that them providing that is a necessity, and it should be a requirement. I don't see how we can freely give money without expecting that they give an analytical report of how that money is spent. For example, the Casa Volunteer that came, she actually showed a monetary amount that was spent in our County, and the, and the lack of what was done based on the fact that we didn't have any volunteers here. So there was actually a gap in what the potential services could have been provided versus what were actually provided. And we paid much more than our fair share of what actual services were provided to our County. So in other words, in lay terms, what that means is, when we're giving monies to organizations that are based out of Salina, if we aren't accounting for the dollars that are spent within our borders, we're actually supporting those functions that happen in Salina. And now, as a nation, we do this, you know, as a whole, we do do this relatively frequently. However, in a situation such as ours, where we have small populace and a limited tax base and minute economic growth, we have to be careful about how we're distributing those funds. So if, I'm just not sure how comfortable you are with funding functions that happen in a different county, or functions that, the administrative costs, let's say, are outweighing the output of benefit to recipients within our borders. I think that should be something that we need to look at. Clearly, it's going to be an ongoing issue. This isn't new, and it's not going to go away.
Do you have anything else to bring before this Board?
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering why you're not concerned about getting an appropriate, across-the-board requirement or prerequisite for groups that are spending money from Lincoln County tax dollars?
I think one thing Alexa says that we've been in here a number of years, and we've seen this year after year after year, and we see what they do. You've been in here for four or five months. You don't have much knowledge of what they've done through the years and stuff like that, like we do. So I can understand how you have a different feeling. But when you deal with these people year after year after year, you pretty much know what they're doing and what they're not doing.
Change is good too.
What?
I said change is good too.
I guess my question is, why would you not want to develop policy? Why, in the years, you know, all the years that I have here in front of me for Lincoln County Resolutions, it's been the same Board here, songs myself. So I guess my question is, why are, why do we not, as Lincoln County Government, have any resolutions pertaining to specific requirements and policies that we have developed?
As I once said, the Council on Aging had policies, and it believed that we had to solve that problem down here in the Commission Room, because they wouldn't, some people wouldn't follow the policy so they could distribute the money. So, you know, it goes both ways. This meeting stands adjourned until Monday morning at 8:00.
You can talk to the camera forever.